Good evening. Welcome to this, the April 23 meeting of the Livermore City Council. I now call the meeting to order. Let the roll call show that all members of the council are present and accounted for. I ask that you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the Pride of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. And in the abundance of caution, question for the city attorney. Was there any action taken in close session that would be considered reportable?
Mr. Mayor, no, there was not.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Moving on to proclamations and presentations. We do have several of these, and I have a speaker card for item number 201 and 203. That is the Public Works Week is 201 and 203 is Fair Housing Month. Connie Cops.
Hello, Mayor, council staff. I'm here to ask that before you give any awards to Public Works, that we step up our GAAP, General Accepted Accounting Principles. I believe that Public Works has not, when it comes, especially to Springtown, you know, they're not following generally accepted accounting practices, and we need to step that up, perhaps have a workshop. And I'll get into that a little bit more at Citizens Forum. For the housing issue, I really want to see maybe less hotel vouchers and find more permanent solutions to our housing troubles. You know, when you live in my neighborhood, you know, you go past two hotels, you know, when you walk anywhere, like where they wanted some kind of a walkway coming out of Springtown. And my daughter and her friend in eighth grade were walking up to Target, and I thought that was perfectly okay. And a mom, the other mom, said, "No, you can't let them walk to Target. It's not safe." And she never really went into it, and I don't think our housing, our people that are homeless are always in a desperate situation. Most people are decent, but I think hotel vouchers, hotels should be exactly what they're there for. They should be there for, as a hotel. And I think that, you know, we need to find a better solution to our, to our housing crisis. And I don't think it should all fall in one area, and too much of it's going to fall in that area, I believe, because downtown, you're getting a signature iconic hotel, which I don't know that that's going to fall back on it, but you need to look at that. And thank you for taking the time to check into that, and especially the GAAP, the Generally Accepted Accounting Principles. There was no paperwork ever. There were no solid financials to back up anything that was said about the golf course to the people, and decisions were made on generalizations and even, I think, some false reporting. So I really want that checked out. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cops. Question regarding general accounting principles and public works.
I was going to actually do a separate point of order, so I will defer to, is our finance director Doug Alessio can speak to the financing matters, but.
There was a question about general accounting principles or practices and whether or not those apply to our Public Works efforts.
Sure. The Public Works Department is governed by a generally accepted accounting principles. All the accounting for Springtown Golf Course was done under generally accepted accounting principle. So I'm not sure what specifically.
Okay. Obviously, there's, if they have questions regarding any clarification on that, they could certainly contact your office.
Certainly can.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. And I think we're all looking for more permanent solutions, but we do the best we can with the resources that are available.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I did want to draw one point of order here for the, for the council and for the community as well. This portion of the agenda is proclamations. According to your rules of procedure, these are ceremonial items before you. There's no action to be taken by the city council. Therefore, your rules of procedure state that except when you're confirming advisory body members, since there is no action, there generally is no public comment. I do appreciate the fact that you let Ms. Cops speak, so that was very, very good, gracious of you, but just want to point out in your rules, when it's a proclamation, generally it is ceremonial and then there is no action. So I write, equal on dignities, there's no opportunity to speak on that item.
Okay. Thank you. I did note that, I think that was the first time in my history on the council that I'd gotten a, a card, but.
No, no way.
Hear people out. So, thank you. All right. So with that, we have the National Public Works Week. It's May 20th through May 26th, and Darren Greenwood, our Public Works Director, will be receiving this. And the tremendous work, I mean, it really is, this is one of the, cities exist for the reason to provide services, and that's public safety and public works, and it's really what cities were created to do. And with that, whereas public works services in the Livermore community are an integral part of our residents' everyday lives, and their health, safety, and comfort depends on these facilities and services. And whereas the support of an understanding and informed community is vital to the efficient operation of public works systems and programs such as water, sewer, streets, landscaping, public buildings, solid waste, and recyclables collection, and airport operations, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities and services are vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of the members of the Livermore Public Works Departments. And whereas this year, the American Public Works Association declared the week of May 20th to the 26th, 2018, as National Public Works Week in recognition of the importance of the hard work and dedication of our public works personnel. Now, therefore, the city council of the city of Livermore proclaims the week of May 20th to the 26th as National Public Works Week and encourages residents to recognize the contributions the public works staff makes every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. Mr. Greenwood.
Mayor and council, thank you very much for the recognition. Mostly like to thank my staff, who's out there working all the time. Public Works is one of those things that, if we're doing our job right, you don't notice us. So if you don't notice us, we're doing well. If you do notice us, say hi and wave. Thanks for the support of the council.
Yes, we do allow applause during the proclamations and presentations, but I really appreciate everybody here, so thank you. Okay. Now, something very near and dear to my heart, Teacher Appreciation Week. My wife's a teacher, and I certainly appreciate everything that the teachers do for this community and for our children. And that's May 7th through May 11th, and we have Kate Sorrell, who is the Livermore Education Association President in the audience. And so, whereas, since 1984, the National Parent Teacher Association has designated one week in May as a special time to honor the teachers who share their love of learning to educate our children. And whereas teachers encourage lifelong learning in children, inspire their imaginations, and mold our future citizens through guidance and education. And whereas teachers spend countless hours, and I can attest to that, countless hours preparing lessons, evaluating, and you can too, Bob. Counselors are preparing lessons, evaluating progress, counseling and coaching students, and performing community service. And whereas teachers change the lives of millions of children every day, and their work and impact extends far beyond the boundaries of the classroom, and our country's future depends upon providing quality education to all students. And whereas the Livermore City Council recognizes and appreciates the efforts of all teachers as they work to ensure the success of their students. Now, therefore, the city council of the city of Livermore proclaims May 7th through the 11th as Teacher Appreciation Week and encourages residents to show our teachers thanks and gratitude during Teacher Appreciation Week and year round. Ms. Sorrell.
And on behalf of the counselors, nurses, psychologists, speech pathologists, classroom teachers, and teachers on special assignment, there are a part of my organization, I want to thank you, Mayor Marchand, and the members of the city council for conferring this honor on us. We really appreciate your support. Thank you.
And of course, Councilmember Carling's wife had a long and very successful career as a teacher as well. And the third proclamation that we have is for the Bay East Association Realtors, former President Will Durlich and Tim Ambrose, the current president. Is Tim here?
No.
Okay. Just Will. All right. And this is Fair Housing Month. So whereas April 11th, 2018 marks the 50th anniversary of the passage of the Fair Housing Act of 1968, which prohibits housing discrimination for all who live in the United States based on race, color, religion, gender, familial status, disability, or national origin. And whereas fair housing is a positive community good and promotes economic stability, community health, and human relations in all communities, which are improved with diversity and integration. And whereas the state of California has expanded its protections to include the prohibition of housing discrimination based on ancestry, gender expression, genetic information, gender identity, disability, mental or physical, marital status, and source of income. And whereas the city of Livermore supports fair housing through programs such as the Eden Council for Hope and Opportunity, which is ECHO, which has worked for over the past 30 years to promote equal opportunities in housing for Livermore residents and maintain inclusion. And whereas fair housing is integral to the ethical commitment of the members of the National Association of Realtors and the Bay East Association of Realtors, and is critical to the ability of all real estate professionals to serve the clients, customers, and communities. Now, therefore, the city council of the city of Livermore proclaims April 2018 as Fair Housing Month and encourages residents to support and endorse fair housing and reaffirm their commitment to fair housing as a right for all Livermore residents and prospective residents. Mr. Durlich.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for being here. You know, the, the Fair Housing Act of 1968.
Talk to the way, turn around, Dustin. Then you're on camera.
I'll do it this way.
Right there.
Actually, the Fair Housing Act of 1968 was a result of the 1964 Civil Rights Act and then the 1965 Voting Rights Act, and had been in Congress since 1966, in and out of committee, et cetera. And the Congress was actually urged to action with the assassination of Dr. King on April 4th of 1968. And what resulted was a bipartisan effort between then Senator Everett Dirksen and President Lyndon Johnson to bring the legislation out of committee, into a vote, and on his desk for signature by April 11th. So a good example of what a bipartisan effort can do for right legislation. And it is, it is a key piece of legislation and a key piece of our profession as Realtors and as city officials to make available to everyone that, fair housing, equal opportunity to housing, and to allow every individual, every citizen of this country, to have the right to live where they choose to, to have their children educated in the schools that they choose to, and to be citizens and participants in building the community that they choose to live in. And the goal of the Realtor Association, Bay East, California Association, our neighbors, as well as the National Association, is to assist in that and to help build communities one family, one home, and one generation at a time. So we thank you for this recognition, and we can assure you that we will continue to work with Livermore and with the residents of Livermore to provide that fair housing to all who seek it. So, thank you very much.
Well, thank you, Will. Back in the day when bipartisan legislation was not that unusual. We long for those days. Okay. Well, very good. Well, thank you very much. Now, we have the update from the Commission of the Arts. This is, we've got some cool stuff going up lately. This is excellent. It's been a long time coming.
It has, indeed.
We have Monja Lane here from the Commission for the Arts.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, and thank you for this opportunity to provide an update on behalf of the Commission for the Arts. Livermore's public art has become part of what makes Livermore unique, and it does help attract both our residents and our visitors to the city. Of course, as you started appropriately, we are excited that at long last, the four sculptures have arrived and they're being installed along First Street. In the last few days, you may have seen one installed outside the Livermore Cinemas, across the street from the Bankhead Theater, and outside of the Ale House. Tomorrow morning, the fourth sculpture will be installed next to Lizzie Fountain. And three of those sculptures are kinetic, meaning that they have pieces which move with the breeze, appropriate for Livermore. And the artists for each of these sculptures have attended their installation, and each one has expressed how impressed they are with downtown Livermore. They, I wanted to pass that on because each in their own way expressed how interesting and unique and inviting. The city of Livermore is, this morning, the comment was that public art is one symbol of a vibrant community, and that is a nice statement about Livermore. Of course, public art can take many forms. Over the past year, we funded a wonderful combination of grants, thanks to our developer fees, and the list includes Livermore Valley Opera's Student Outreach Program, Bothwell Arts Center's Art Walk, the Livermore Shakespeare Festival, Livermore Amador Symphony's Grade School Fiddle Club and their Summer Youth Orchestra Program, Pacific Chamber Orchestra Elementary School Assemblies, and commissioning a concerto to be performed for jazz violin and orchestra, the poet laureate's science poetry contest, which was recently successfully held, and LVPAC's Deluxe Puppets Program for both schools and the public. We also funded the city's art awards for the Livermore Art Association's Spring Art Show, which was just recently held, our annual art in the schools performances, and our annual senior high school student art awards. We also had the pleasure of recommending selection of Livermore's current poet laureate, Cynthia Patton, who's really organized and has already had a number of events for the literary community. The Commission for the Arts role extends to approving projects that are funded by others, such as the bus stop artwork designed by local high school students, the Arroyo Overpass Beautification artwork, and developers who choose to incorporate the city's art requirement into their development, such as the Sage Development on Isabel Avenue. There are some exciting projects on our horizon. We're very pleased to be working with the Stockman's Association on the RFP for an honorary sculpture to be located in Stockman's Park. We have a draft RFP for a tile wall mural. We're working on a concept for a sculpture garden in the new Civic Center building area. And last but not least, we'd like to develop a walking tour guide and possibly a driving tour guide for the city's public artworks. We do still have an update for the, of the Livermore Cultural Arts Plan, as you know, and review of the fee on the docket from last year. We're hopeful that the city will be able to move forward on this in the near future. We do still need to increase the diversity of the arts commissioners to better represent the diversity of residents across Livermore, and if there's someone here listening who has an interest, please check the city's website. Commission for the Arts meetings are the second Tuesday of every month at the Civic Center Library. The public is always welcome to attend. Thank you very much.
Any questions for Ms. Lane? I tell you, I just, I just love the fact that, and you sort of glossed over a little bit, but I think it's remarkable that Livermore has a development fee. For new development, there's a fee for the arts because it contributes to the quality of life for the people that are here. And there aren't a lot of cities that have that. And there was a question about whether or not general fund dollars went into those sculptures in the downtown, which I think is a worthy investment, but those were paid for through that art development fee.
Correct.
So that was, so as new development came in, it continues to contribute to the quality of life of all the residents. So I think that that's, that's a wonderful thing, and you're doing great work throughout the community. I find it very exciting because people can participate in the arts on a daily basis, wherever they live. I think that's.
Absolutely.
Certainly contributes to the quality of life.
Thank you.
I would just want to say thank you for the, the very comprehensive report, and to you and your fellow members for all you've done.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your support greatly.
Great. Thank you.
Sorry. Oh, just one last comment. You know, I don't need you to speak on it. It's just the downtown art installations.
Yes.
I think they're, I mean, I'm excited to see them go in.
Thank you.
And so far, I've heard the one in front of the Ale House, you know, light was hitting it just right. It was slightly moving, and you know, you just hear people, "Whoa." And it's a good "whoa." It's not a bad, you know, like, "Whoa."
That's great. That's great to hear. I know art is in the eye of the beholder, so.
Yeah, no, and that's, that's part of art, is it generates discussion, whether you like it or not.
That's right.
But I mean, I think it's, that one in particular, I think, turned out very well with the colors and the kinetic aspect of it.
My guess is people will be saying, "Meet me at the Sunflower."
Yep.
Sunflower. And then, of course, the one by Lizzie Fountain is called "Tada."
"Tada."
Great. Well, thank you very much. Okay. With that, we finish out the proclamations and presentations. Moving on to Citizens Forum, these are items that are not on the agenda. The city council will neither deliberate nor take action on items during the Citizens Forum. And I ask that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. And we move on to, first, Mary and Dave, David McQuiggin, Catherine Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. We are seniors who help the seniors. We become involved with the Meals on Wheels program and have for the last year and a half. In retirement, we think it's one of the best decisions we've made to devote our time and energy to provide, help provide nutritious meals, and, most importantly, social contact for our seniors. We have amazing clients with amazing life stories. However, health issues have forced many of them to make difficult decisions. Over the last year and a half, we have built a trust with our clients, and many share with us their day-to-day, how their day-to-day is for them. Unfortunately for most, those decisions include food. Most want to remain in their homes as long as possible, but can no longer shop, physically prepare food, or even cook simple nutritious meals. We have experienced the roller coaster ride in funding for the program, which initially led to increase in clients and volunteers, to the current situation where meals are no longer delivered on the weekends, and only clients with critical need are served on Monday through Friday. There's now a long waitlist for Livermore. The downside of volunteering, we have found, is that sometimes we are the messengers notifying the clients that the funding has been cut. During funding fluctuations, clients were added, then taken off, then added back on if one-time funding was found. Some are so grateful to be back on the program. Others are upset with the on-again, off-again, on-again. These are clients we worry about most, whether they're receiving the nutritious nutritional care or the social contact that they need. We have had the pleasure of taking city council members, especially Mr. Mayor, human service officials, and the staff from Congressman Swalwell's office on ride-alongs with us to meet our clients and hear their stories. We sincerely hope that the city council, at some near-future point, will be able to consider funding for Spectrum's Meals on Wheels program, simply not as one-time funding because the needs of our citizens, our senior citizens, will only increase as we age, but sustainable, long-term funding assistance. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Dave McQuiggin, Catherine Myers, Connie Preeb.
Let's start out with a simple observation. People operate on a spectrum of ethical standards. Organizations operate on a spectrum of ethical standards. Now, if you were to plot the ethical levels of people versus the ethical levels of the organizations they belong to, you'd expect to find something that looks like this. Where most of the time, you'd find ethical people in ethical organizations, and to a hopefully lesser degree, you find less ethical people in less ethical organizations. Now, I divided the graph into quadrants because, as there are two empty quadrants that are interesting. They both represent more temporary situations, although for different reasons. This quadrant represents unethical people in an ethical organization. Most of the time, the organization will purge the unethical people. However, in the rare case, when the individual is a leader of the organization, they can manage to bring the ethical standards of the whole organization down to the level of the leader. This quadrant represents ethical people in unethical organizations, and most of the times, the ethical person will just leave the unethical organization. Less of the time, they become a whistleblower. Now, an ethical leader is just what is needed in an unethical organization, as they can permanently, certainly make a positive impact to driving the organization forward, and something that Livermore could dearly use. But the rank-and-file, if they stay, can become corrupted by the organization, and they reduce their ethical standards to match the organizations. These simple observations help us understand several things about the Livermore police. Now, ethical people don't film someone without their consent when they're having sex with them, so it's pretty clear Ex-Officer Black was not the most ethical person. Also knowing that he was retained on the Livermore Police Force for many years when they had full knowledge of his behaviors, here is only one conclusion. An ethical organization enforces its standards, so it's clear the Livermore Police are not an ethical organization. Of course, that explains why you have such trouble hiring police officers. Good people don't want to work for corrupt organizations, and Livermore's reputation is well-known and deserved. And that's the same reason you can be sure that if you're looking at a Livermore police officer, you're looking at someone who lacks ethics. Ethical people don't belong to unethical organizations for long. Another thing to realize is that unethical organizations are kind of like mold. They need special conditions to thrive. Of course, given that Mayor Marchand willfully lies to the public and deliberately interferes in criminal prosecutions, we can understand how Livermore provides just such conditions.
Catherine Myers, Connie Preeb, Michelle Gallegos.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Catherine Myers, and I've been a happy resident of Livermore for 18 years, and I came out here for a lot of reasons. One of the reasons, beautiful. Everywhere you look, beautiful. Yesterday was Earth Day, and we decided to gather at Pete's Coffee in downtown because there is a duck pond that's in a lot of danger. That duck pond, we found out a few days ago, has been here since 1967. It was man-made. Quite popular. And since then, can you imagine the ecosystem that is happening in this pond? Lots of beautiful, thriving life. Ducks have memory. They fly away, they come back. They have their children. They live here. The geese, same thing. When I drive to work, I drive by this lovely pond, and I can't do anything but smile. If anybody's having a rough day at the office on the way home, they look at the pond. Has there ever been a time when there hasn't been anyone at the pond to sit and enjoy watching a. Has there ever been a time when there hasn't been anyone at the pond to sit and enjoy watching a flock of ducks come in and hit the water? You smile. You can't help it. It makes you feel good. Written by Andy Warhol and John Muir. Art is nature. Nature is art, it's beautiful. Leave it alone. Or, in this case, we've got a little problem. It can't get any air because the pumps have either been turned off or they're broken. There's no water getting into it because there's a big water problem. I guess when the golf course was thriving and people were playing golf, somehow or another, the water got there, and somehow or another, the pumps were thriving. People, they live there, just like the Freedom Act, the Housing Act, these creatures live there. How can we, as human beings, we are the hierarchy of the food chain, how can we decide that these feathered creatures and these creatures that live under the water, how can we decide, you know what, you're out of here? You know what, there's no money, there's no nothing, or whatever it is. But Livermore is a very interesting town, as we've just heard. All of these beautiful statements about Livermore, how beautifully cultured it is, it's turning heads. Actually, my business is in the San Francisco Bay Area, and all they're telling me, oh, we know what the weather is in Livermore, we know what's going on in Livermore. Wow, there's a lot of stuff going on in Livermore, it's great. This is a cloud, gentlemen and ladies, this is a cloud. Now, our little group has been in touch with the Sierra Club, PETA, the Veterans Administration, we might even have Tony La Russa out here. This needs to be preserved. Let's not get rid of it, please. Can you help us save the pond? It's gorgeous. It's got a little trouble now, but you know, we all get a little trouble. And then our friends come and help. We can help. When the seagoing gulls and all these ducks, they get oil on them, we go in, cleanse them, bring them back to health, and set them free. Let's save the pond, people. Please help us save the pond. Work with us, we want to work with you, we want to save the pond. Thank you very much and good evening.
Thank you very much. Connie Prebe, Michelle Gallegos, Neil Herrick.
Good evening, my name is Connie, and I am a property owner on Rainflower Drive in Springtown, or the Springtown area. These ponds used to be beautiful when I moved here in mid-2009, and I actually picked this neighborhood because of those duck ponds. I'm absolutely disgusted that city staff thinks it's okay to roll trucks and fences into that area and do the kind of disruptive work they have been doing when it's breeding time for these birds. March is the month of new ducklings, everyone knows this. Pond maintenance over the past years has been so responsibly neglected, and that is why they are now in such poor condition. And now the wildlife there is finally just being discarded. The fountains were shut off, mowing and cleaning of sidewalks stopped, the duck crossing warning signs on Blue Bell disappeared. If funding was needed, why was there no sign posted right there by the pond to alert residents who frequent the area? If the stakeholders, which by my definitions are residents, property owners, and anyone who appreciates these ponds, were properly informed of these issues, we could have come up with solutions, donations, and volunteer work. Mayor, you told me two weeks ago on the sidewalk by the ponds that LARPD was to blame because, I'm quoting you, "The city doesn't do parks and ponds," and you had transferred responsibility to them. Well, Tim Berry clarified LARPD's role two weeks ago and directly contradicted what you said to me on the sidewalk. These ponds and their wildlife are a very important part of this neighborhood, a 50-plus-year-old landmark cherished by so many of the local residents, and with proper maintenance and some changes and improvements, it should stay that way. In regards to the improper feeding, when has a "don't do" sign ever worked? Instead, let's install educational signage about the different habitat species, including explanations about the importance of proper diet, maybe even a duck food dispenser, volunteer work, a barrier or specific landscaping to discourage road crossing of the animals, speed bumps, diversion of traffic, there are so many things that could be done to make this right. Nature is a source of peace and stress relief for many. I've talked to so many residents who told me how just passing by puts a smile on their face, and I'm one of those. Many come here to find some tranquility, enjoy the pretty sunset, and watch the ducks and critters in and around the pond. It's a very important part of mental health and balance these days to find those moments. There are some people who are speeding by, killing animals without even blinking, and you want your kids running around and skateboarding in that location? I also would encourage all of you to go to a skate park and experience firsthand how noisy that gets, next to a library. Nature is a very important part of our lives. Humans depend on it, and so it's important for communities to teach kids about it and involve them with real-life nature experiences, not with bullfrog sculptures. I also would like to see a cost analysis of the planned skate park and a comparison directly to what it would cost to revive the ponds. Thank you for listening.
And just to make a slight correction, yes, I was there, by the way, I was there yesterday and also two weeks ago when I spoke with you, I said that the city of Livermore does not operate parks, and that it was LARPD that developed the master plan.
We were talking about the maintenance.
Right, we don't maintain parks.
Right, but you're the property owner, so how does it get maintained? You just stop maintaining it then?
LARPD, we own a lot of park lands, and LARPD operates and maintains all of them. Bill Payne is, for example, one of them.
But not the pond?
We own that. Kayatano Park, we own that, but the city doesn't operate it. LARPD operates it, because they have the expertise. We asked them to develop the master plan for that area.
But Mr. Berry stated that he's just partnering on the development of the open-space planning. He didn't say anything that he's responsible for maintaining the ponds.
We didn't develop the master plan, and we didn't, we don't operate parks. The city does not, LARPD does.
But you own the ponds.
We own the land.
Right.
We do not operate parks. But that was the point that I made. We asked LARPD to develop the master plan because they're the ones that are experts at developing parks.
Yes, but if you own the ponds, aren't you responsible for maintenance of them? No matter who, you can assign it, delegate it to someone, but that wasn't done.
As I said, we depend upon LARPD to maintain park lands, and that'll be, what we'll ultimately do is turn that over in the future. So, thank you. I just wanted to define that one point, to clarify that. Michelle Gallegos, Neil Herrick, Greg Scott.
Hi, my name is Michelle. I'm a proud Livermore homeowner for 24 years now. City Council, can you please help us save our ponds? Please. I would like to speak about the communication provided to the residents about the removal of our ponds at Springtown, or the lack of. When we mentioned to you, Mr. Mayor, how we voted for open space and against housing with Measure FF on April 9th at the pond, you claimed not to know about this ballot. We thought that was odd, so no vote did take place in regards to the pond. You and the City Council members confirm this for us. City Council, can you please help us save our ponds? According to Mr. Greenwood notices went out to stakeholders, he specified library, city staff, and Springtown HOA members. I live in the Bill Clark area, and I received nothing. My house is closer to the pond than many HOH members. We were told, "Do you live under a rock?" But by now, we have talked to over 250 Springtown residents face-to-face, who all knew about the open-space development planning, but who did not realize the ponds were part of this discussion or knew of any of the removal plans. And we are very upset about what is going on. And that all of this, have signed a paper petition to stop this tragedy, and that's a very big rock. A large number of residents were not aware of these ponds were part of the open-space planning. That shows how badly it was communicated. We have collected over 1,100 signatures with an online petition and 250 signatures on a hard copy petition of local residents who were aware of the open-space planning, but had no idea that our ponds were being taken out. Who would even think about a pond disappearing? Due to the local, due to the location between the city, library, and HOA clubhouse and pool, many of us did not realize that we were part of that golf course. Lack of communication and contradicting information from city officials caused the social media fire. These duck ponds are a very important part of this neighborhood, a landmark cherished by so many of the local residents and myself. City Council, can you please, 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 help us save our ponds? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gallegos. Neil Herrick, Greg Scott, Laura Calvert.
Mr. Mayor, members, staff, I wanted to thank you very much. I noticed in the paper the other day, they were dedicating more housing in the city. Mr. Mayor, I saw your picture. I wanted to thank everyone for that. I know we're working on homeless housing. The mayor had also brought up senior housing, veteran housing, and I think we need to keep that in the back of our minds as citizens and as members of the community. We need to not just stereotype what housing is for, and I want to commend the mayor very much on that. Staff, thank you very much. I'm not comfortable with that term because it really doesn't describe how important you are. I've been to other City Council members, and staff isn't. So if I can go with support staff, and you all will take that as it's meant, I think you do a hell of a job, and I want to commend you on that. Mr. Wenty, I appreciate his showing up every two weeks. He's a part of the community, and I enjoy his feedback. As far as the city goes, I work for the Contra Costa Water District. We have Contra Loma, we have several miles of urban trail along our canals. We outsource that to East Bay Regional Parks. While we technically own the land, the maintenance, the running of, the fees generated, all of that is outsourced through them. And I think members of the city need to realize that is part of what's going on here. The city may actually own the park, but you may be outsourcing it to another authority that's in charge of running. If there's a conflict, then that's something between the city and that outsourced person. But the citizens need to realize, you're not necessarily making those decisions on a day-to-day basis. And I appreciate everybody, thank you for my time.
Mr. Herrick, thank you very much. Greg Scott, Laura Calvert, Connie Cops.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Marchand, Livermore City Council, City of Livermore staff, and those of you watching by video, both live and recorded. I want to thank those of you listening by video and those of you attending in this room for your participating and your governance. Too much of our governance is controlled by money, and non-participation only makes this money control stronger. We also put too much emphasis on the solutions to our problems being primarily money. I am Greg Scott, and I speak here on the homeless issue in Livermore. Some of the homeless problems even caused by money. We are in a housing bubble. I learned from the Wall Street Journal that $50 billion in capital flight out of the People's Republic, of the $50 billion in capital flight out of the People's Republic of China, 20 per month, $25 billion goes into California real estate in an attempt to preserve assets. This drives up prices and gives us ghost-empty residences, from the exclusive Black Hawk Development in Contra Costa County, to empty townhouses in Dublin, to empty houses throughout the Bay Area. This only is increasing the housing crisis. I attended the last Human Services Commission meeting, and I heard the phrase "leveraging the funds." Yay for leveraging the funds, however, it seems euphemistic for shuffle the deck, as in a deck of cards. I hear the homeless say, "Deal." Get over it, homeless, you'll be lucky to get dealt anything, or if you do, it will be a low-value card, unless you are very lucky. Mr. Mayor, I heard you speak on Consent Item 4.03 in the last City Council meeting, which is about affordable housing moving to Pacific Avenue out of the Downtown Hotel Project, and I say, "Good idea." As you mentioned also, certainly most of us want to see veterans and/or disabled and/or elderly have housing. The problem is that so few who need affordable housing obtain it. The Center for American Progress gives a statistic that 25% of Americans in the United States who need affordable housing receive it. No doubt, this percentage is far lower in California. Affordable housing is great for very few, is at a considerable expense to most of the community, it is magnanimity for some, and for the greater majority who need it, it is nothing. In fact, it is worse than nothing because it reinforces a power structure that accentuates the housing problem in the first place. What is needed are solutions that are less expensive. What is being done in Livermore in regard to California Assembly Bill 2176 that eases building codes for tiny houses? New Story Charity can 3D print a tiny house for $6,500 in 24 hours. My understanding is that the Vineyard Project will house 24 hard-to-house homeless. Hard-to-house homeless? Is that a cultural oxymoron, like driving in a parkway or parking in a driveway? What we need are less-expensive solutions that solve the homeless problem for more of the homeless.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Laura Calvert, Connie Cops, John Stein.
Can I switch places? Victoria Cristobal put in a card, too.
Absolutely, sure. Who am I switching it with?
Victoria Cristobal, Spectrum Community Services. Yes, good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. I rise tonight to tell you about a population that finds it difficult to come out to these meetings like this, and who are important members of the city. The homebound elderly who cannot prepare meals for themselves, so they rely on Spectrum Community Services Meals on Wheels program to deliver not only a nutritious meal, but a safety and wellness check with a smile from our well-trained volunteers, some of the volunteers that you met this evening. The city of Livermore has supported this program over the years. The current fiscal year has been particularly difficult as the need for meals has increased 50% in the past two years. We do not have the funding to meet this need. We currently have a waitlist and cannot feed all those who qualify for this vital safety net program. We are here to ask that you consider fully funding this vital program. I also want to invite each one of you to join us for a ride-along, so that you too can experience this program, that it's not just a meal delivery service. I also want to make mention that I spent the day at our State Capitol for Advocacy Day and met with legislators and staff to ask for the support at the state levels as well. We're asking senior nutrition budget, the senior nutrition budget proposal of $17.5 million to serve 2 million more meals. So, it's from the city level we ask for support, we're also asking for support at the state level. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cristobal. Connie Cops, John Stein, Carl Wenty.
Hi, I'm Connie Cops, Tulip Way. I want to talk to the issue of Springtown again, mayor, staff, council members, and I'm very serious. I really want to get some points around, and I expect you to listen and maybe back up whatever you hear to make sure it is true. I want to ask Doug, why our Public Works is still using 939 Larkspur as their address when they, you know, aren't dealing with the HOA anymore? I want to know why I sit surrounded by that golf course. And I was giving a flyer on the day of a meeting when I came home from a vacation, to learn what was going on in the very, very beginning. I want to know why we are still using 939 Larkspur as the address. I want to know where the original water system was. That was watering Springtown Golf Course. And I want to know why there is, you know, a talk that the state has denied the water as if it's not going to be a golf course, that they could only give us water if it was going to be a golf course. I want to know which state official said that, and why we didn't perhaps ask why. I want to know why there are ducks absolutely suffering inside a plastic fence right now, where there's a half-filled pond, that these ducks can't go on. I want to know why. That's what I want to know. I want to know why we couldn't have started with the truth. Today, I called Judy Erlinson, and I asked her to backpedal to the truth. Because I walked up to the park today and saw mounds and mounds and mounds of dirt up there, and I asked her why. And she said, "Well, that's coming from the airport." I want to know when and why there was an easement on our HOA property to come through and dump that. I want to know why, on my birthday, when I was walking down Blue Bell, I saw sawed-off copper that's at the end of the golf course with a blue pipe or a purple pipe that was, like, dug, and it's along the trail. I want to know what the original water system was, I want to know where the original water system hooked up to, and I want to know I want to know where the original water system hooked up to, and I want to know when and why and how. It was noted finally by Tim Berry at the last meeting that the city does own the park or the golf course, and its boundaries are, you know, that area. I want to know why Tim Berry, as he retired, said that the park has agreed to pay for all this. I want to know if Tim Berry is actually paying for that big mound of dirt that I heard is coming from the airport. I have no qualms about doing the right thing for Springtown, but I want to know why we don't backpedal to the truth.
Thank you, Ms. Cops. John Stein, Carl Wenty, Laura Calvert. Mr. Stein.
John Stein, 1334 Cathy Court. At the last meeting, I asked what the status was of the wetlands and new pond at the back of the golf course near Marlin Pound. And I believe council member Werner at the Matters Initiated also brought it up. I was wondering if you yet know what the status is. There is some wetlands along within the banks of Altamont Creek, but I didn't see anything else, and I was wondering what the status is. The other thing is, it's sort of heartwarming to see the people in Springtown becoming more active. I think at the last meeting, one of the speakers said that they feel like the redheaded stepchildren of Livermore. And one of the reasons is because they're not involved in the political process, and it's nice to see them involved. The other thing is, I believe that the community would like to know the history of the super block, the Lucky Site, all the way back to the point when a speedy was purchased, when the site plan was developed for the regional theater and the 500 units of affordable housing, the $5 million loan from the state, dissolution of the redevelopment agency, and all the various out parcels, like the latest thing is the raising of the Carol Jean Studio and the building next to it are being paid for out of the new City Hall funds. So I think it would be worthwhile providing a brief history of the site so people understand how it developed, why there's a $14 million essentially loan from the Affordable Housing Fund. And I believe this would clarify a lot of issues that are coming up in the letters to the editor and discussions on the street. Also, I would urge the council to visit Leahy Square in Stony Creek and consider carefully whether 100% affordable projects are, in the long term, sustainable. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Stein. Carl Wenty, Laura Calvert, Virgo Deegan. Great job at the Innovation Fair, by the way.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Spodowski, Bob, thank you for what you do. Appreciate it. You know, good government is a process. Staff, you know, that's a lofty word for me, the job that you all do. I thank you. I don't want to name names, but 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 have taken meetings with me. They take meetings with the public, and if you want to educate yourself on good government, please do so. Mr. Stein, as I hear you talk, remember what is public domain. Thank you so much for all those copies, the time that you spent with me, that you have better things to do, but good government has a public domain to go back to. So utilize it. They're here to work for the people, of the people, of the people, for the people, by the people. That's what good government is. So thank you all for what you do. Thank teachers for what they do. Thank you all in uniform for what you do. Serve, protect, make this a better place. I salute you all there. So, you know, we want to have a great downtown. We want to have great, good government, all of the involvement. I shouldn't have said "good government" to downtown together. All of the good people here speaking passionately about things they believe. It's awesome, right? It's awesome to hear things, talking about the spectrum of ethical standards and truth, and how we get there, and how we have government of the people, for the people, by the people. I just implore you to leverage staff. Sorry, I'm not telling everyone to take meetings with all y'all because you've got lots to do, but there is public domain documentation that's there so we can truly have involvement. So anybody that's here for the first time, yeah, good. Let's continue making it a good government. So as we talk about downtown, I don't want to bring it back to that because it seems like so much fun not talking about it. But when I was doing some reading, I want to quote Benjamin Franklin. So you've heard me talk about the Hamiltonian-Jeffersonian, Hamilton and Franklin on one side of the street, Jefferson and Madison on the other. Benjamin Franklin, "I confess that -- I confess there are several parts of this Constitution which I do not, at present, agree, but I am sure I will never agree with them. I doubt too where any -- I doubt too whether any Constitution we can obtain may be able to make a better Constitution. It therefore astonishes me, sir, to find this system approaching so near perfection. It will astound our enemies." So at the same time, he said it was faulty. He had so much he didn't like about it, and the other side, he said that's damn near perfection. We're not at a perfect downtown, but we're at a place where the process worked and it was there. I'm going to change the words, Mr. Franklin. "I confess there are several parts of this downtown plan which I do not, at present, agree, but I am sure I will never agree with any of them. I doubt too whether any downtown plan we can obtain," I love that word, "we can obtain" because it's a process of the people, for the people, "may be able to make a better downtown. It therefore astonishes me, sir, to find this system so near to perfection. It ain't perfect, but it's good process and good government. It will astound other towns, municipalities, and what they do. Thank you all for what you do. Leverage the staff, leverage public domain to know what's out there so we can understand the process and be part of that process." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wenty. Ms. Calvert and Virgo Deegan.
Hi, I'm Laura Calvert. I'm the Executive Director at Spectrum Community Services, and we provide the Leahy and Weatherization Program here in Livermore as well as Meals on Wheels. You heard from some of our volunteers and staff, and I wanted to make sure, we're here because we want to make sure that you know what's going on with your residents. These are some of the most vulnerable people who live here in Livermore, and many of them have deep roots here in Livermore. Their home -- they have to qualify for Meals on Wheels. They need to be over the age of 60 and be homebound and not have ways to get to the grocery store, not be able to make meals for themselves, and really need our assistance. What we deliver is much more than just a nutritious meal. It's also a self-safety and wellness check. We partner with the police department here in Livermore so that they have, know who is the most vulnerable in the community if there is, God forbid, something that happened like the Oroville Dam when people were asked to leave and evacuate their homes within 45 minutes. The police need to know who's living on their own and have no way out of their home if we are in that kind of a situation, or the fires that we experienced last year. We provide that partnership. In 2014-15, there were 17,000 meals that we delivered to Livermore residents. This year, there was a demand for 26,000 meals from Livermore residents, and we have not been able to provide all of them. We have had to cut back because we don't have enough funding to make that happen. We have always been able to serve everybody who's called us and who has been eligible, and that is just simply not the case anymore. We have 43 Livermore residents on a waiting list. At the high last summer, early fall, we were serving up to 115 Livermore residents on any given day. Meals on Wheels truly always has been a community and a government partnership. We are not asking you to be the sole way that we survive. The federal government, the state, the county, the cities, private individuals give donations. We ask for help. Thank you very much to the Livermore Rotary Foundation for helping us. Thank you very much to our volunteers for stepping up. And we -- I am committed to continue doing more fundraising, but we need your help as this need continues to grow. We really need an increased commitment from the City of Livermore to make sure we have less people on our waiting list, not more. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Calvert. Virgo Deegan.
Hi, good evening. My name is Virgo. I'm just a resident and an animal lover, and it's as simple as that. Darren Greenwood just spoke of how if people don't notice a problem, then he is doing his job well. Well, people are obviously noticing, as you can see from just this meeting alone. A few weeks ago, in an email from him to me, he stated, and I quote, "Over the last 10 years, the Springtown Pond has been saned 60 times, and the non-native animals captured had to be euthanized. As a human, those actions are completely unacceptable. Also, it is a fact that the Springtown HOA Clubhouse Pool drains into the pond, chemicals and all." A lot of people have been asking why the biologist who is hired by the city to oversee these animals has not been present on-site thus far. By now, most residents are aware that the trucks that have been going in and out have been driving over active birds' nests, literally and physically running over birds and their eggs and/or chicks. And I would like to ask respectfully, has the city done anything to the water in the pond in the recent weeks? I ask because there has been a mass exodus of reptiles from the water, which is extremely unusual. They are being found far away from the pond, which is highly unusual behavior, and they have also been found dead in numbers away from the pond. Thank you.
I'm going to close the public hearing. Couple of questions, if I may. Is it true that the Springtown Pool, in violation of Regional Water Quality Control Board regulations, drains into the ponds? That's a pretty huge fine.
I don't know if the whole pool itself does, but there's an area drain in the pool area that does daylight into the pond. As part of the investigation in removing the pond, we looked at all the different infrastructure out there, and that's one of the things we discovered. It's not shocking, I guess, given that the original developer...
It is shocking.
Well, not really.
If I can't turn a fire hydrant into a storm drain, that's shocking.
Well, but the original developer that built the whole thing, including the pond and the clubhouse area, you've got to remember, this thing was built in 1960, 1966. At that time, the, let's say, the enforcement of where water and drains go weren't nearly as aggressive as it is now. So I'm sure whoever installed it popped it out to the nearest place they could drain it. So we've talked to the HOA about removing that because when the pond's filled in, they'll need to redirect that drainage.
Wow, okay. Also, a lot of these questions have come up as far as which agency was -- I remember Zone 7 was part of that, but also the state. Which agency provided the permits for the water impoundments which allowed the irrigation of the golf course?
Basically, there were several agencies involved. The water rights came from Zone 7, as you're aware. So Zone 7 released untreated water down the Arroyo, down the unnamed tributary there. We had a permit from the Regional Water Quality Control Board, Fish and Game, or Fish and Wildlife Now, and Army Corps of Engineers. And what the permit was for was to allow us to install a seasonal barricade, which we would put in at certain times when we were going to release the water. That would divert the water into the irrigation pond, and then we would irrigate from that pond. The statement Mr. Deegan read about saning, the point I was trying to make is, everybody who wants that old water source, and basically Brian Wines from the Regional Water Quality Control Board is the main agency that said no, that we could not have a permit. The permit that we had from the state and all the resource agencies required us to do an assessment six times per year for predatory species, basically to protect red-legged frog. So we would have to do what's called saning. We didn't do it, but we had to hire a qualified biologist, and what they did is, six times a year, they'd go not to the duck pond itself, to the back irrigation pond where we were diverting water as a source of irrigation. And we were required six times a year to go through, drag a big net through the water, basically, to look for bullfrogs or bullfrog eggs because they're predatory to red-legged frogs. But in addition, everything else they captured that was not a native species, by law, had to be euthanized. And my point in telling that to Mr. Deegan was, for folks that are animal lovers, that are worried about, you know, species in the pond being impacted, keep in mind that to irrigate the whole property of the golf course and to fill the pond, that lots of animals were killed. That's what the permit required. So for anybody who wishes to go back to get that permit just to fill the duck pond, the saning requirement would still be there. So we would be effectively killing a bunch of wildlife from the back pond to provide water to the front pond to keep the ducks there. So that's why I brought that up in the email to Mr. Deegan.
That permit was not...
As far as his comments about us running over anything, Mr. Deegan's also the one that posted online that we filled in one of the ponds. Despite the fact that he spoke to both me, a member of my staff, and received emails from us the same day he made those claims. Of course, we have not filled any of the ponds. Dirt just started arriving at the site today. The area where the dirt's being stockpiled was inspected beforehand and, you know, cleared to make sure there's no nest there, and there weren't any. We've not ran over anything. So the statements about, you know, trucks running over ducks, I just can't confirm that.
And with regards to the -- are there any natural tributaries that supply the pond?
No, there's no natural flow into the pond. It's completely man-made, and the only way it got water was from the irrigation system.
One of those pumped up from the artificial impound.
Correct.
But there are no tributaries. So if the pond were, as one of the speakers said, to be left alone, it would dry up.
It would.
And if the state, because of the last drought, as I understand it, prohibits the use of potable water for decorative ponds unless they're recycled or recirculated water and concrete-lined.
Yeah, because the pond has no lining at the bottom. It's basically an earthen-bottom pond. You lose water to percolation. So it doesn't really meet the definition in our mind of a recirculated system, so we don't believe we can use potable water in there.
So it would be against state regulation to use potable water in that pond, and the pond has no natural tributaries?
Correct.
And the permit was not renewed for the impound, which previously had allowed water to be pumped up into the pond. That permit was not renewed.
Correct.
Okay.
Excuse me, may I ask a question?
You've already -- no, I'm sorry, sorry. I've closed the public comment period. Thank you very much.
I can't ask anything.
Okay, any -- I guess we can't deliberate because this is the public -- Citizens Forum. Okay, I'm going to close Citizens Forum and moving on to, thank you for your comments. And something, we may bring some of these back during matters for consideration.
Okay, I do have, let's see, 405, 406, 407, 408. Okay, what I would like to do is let's -- I have comment cards for 405, 406, and 407. So let us do for -- could I get a motion for 401, 2, 3, 4, 8, 9, 10?
So moved.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Carling.
No, that was Cooper.
Oh, sorry. I said moved by Bob.
Seconded by Bob.
Okay, okay. And seconded by Councilmember Carling. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Those passed unanimously. Okay, I have Stephen Dunbar, which is to speak on 4.05. Mr. Dunbar?
Good evening, Council. If I could speak for 405, 406, and 407 simultaneously in one comment.
Okay, certainly, please.
As for 405, my name's Steve Dunbar. I'm a Livermore resident and worker at Gillig Bus. For 405, I just wanted to say I hope that we are able to use all of the funds effectively to incorporate the bike plan that we're about to release. I support 407 wholeheartedly as someone who bikes that direction very often. As for 405, or sorry, 406, excuse me, the Jack London intersection work, I've been talking back and forth with the engineer for the project about my concerns for that. I have a few people behind me who also have concerns with me, and I represent some people from Gillig who also bike to work very often, as well as some people who bike from Dublin to the lab behind me. And we're concerned that the improvements that you're about to release, a bid for, or approve the bid for, in this case, are not safe for cyclists. There's a future trail involved in the design there, but the on-street path that, or the on-street cycle lane that you're about to build there really doesn't comply with the bike plan that you're about to release. In fact, the first... In fact, the first phase projects that are specified in that plan say that the bike lane for that street should be a protected cycleway. And so, in spending $800,000 to improve this intersection, only to have to redo it right afterwards, is not, in my mind, the best use of resources, as the mayor alluded to earlier. So, I invite staff to delay and talk through our concerns, and maybe get it even compliant with the bike plan that is nearly done in final draft form. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Dunbar. And we cut down on your commute by bringing Gillig out here.
I actually moved to Livermore as a result.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Okay, all right, well, very good. Well, welcome, welcome to Livermore. Okay, so that was 405, 406, and 407, all right. So, the rest are 406. Nicole Sardella, Evan Branning, Dave Campbell.
First of all, can you imagine if we had that kind of energy when it came to helping other human beings, what we could accomplish? But I am also here for the bike lanes. I drive Jack London often, and it's scary for me as a driver, going so fast, knowing that there's bike lanes there. I think it's really important, we know that we have to make easy the behavior that we want to see in others. So, I think making it easier for people to bike, making it safer for people to bike, and I think it's really in line with Livermore's priorities and the culture and the community that we want to build here, to make it a bike-friendly place. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Ms. Sardella. Evan Branning and Dave Campbell.
Good evening, City Council, Mayor, and staff. My name is Evan Branning, and I'm speaking on behalf of myself tonight. First of all, I just wanted to give a quick shout-out to Spectrum and say that they are doing a wonderful job, and I hope that their request is taken seriously. And as always, thank you to Greg Scott for speaking out. But what I'm here about tonight is to talk about the bike plan in general, and specifically item 406. With the bike plan coming in, I believe, one month for final approval, to your desks, I really think it's important that we wait right now on item 406 and push it back until after the bike plan is finished, to make sure that we don't have any redundancy, where we end up building, paving, paving the extension, paving the widening, painting the bike lanes, and then having to redo the entire project later at a great expense. These kinds of expenses are the kinds of things that could help pay for programs like Spectrum or housing programs. It could end up being quite an expensive project in the end, and simply waiting on this for a month or two will not be something that will be devastating for commuters or anyone involved, and will give an opportunity for us to get a much better bike plan in place and to implement the bike plan much more smoothly. As a biker myself, I am really glad that Livermore has done so much for bikers. I just really do think there is more to be done. When we're looking at projects such as the ones coming up with paving or protected bike lanes, there are options often while we are redoing the streets that we can have for very inexpensive ways of protecting bikers and drivers. Often on the roads, it is quite scary, actually, to be out there. It can be something that I know not everyone empathizes with. When they see bikers speeding by, they think, you know, that they're being reckless, but often the biker is following the rules of the road, and simply there isn't enough space or enough room for the biker to maneuver safely. Considering that, I do hope you'll push back this item currently, and we can have a more robust discussion once we have the full bike plan in place. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Branning. Mr. Campbell?
I have keys on the floor from someone who left. Can I leave it with?
Okay, they probably will not have gotten far.
I'm just...
Thank you, Mr. Herrick. Mr. Campbell?
Mayor, City Councilmembers, my name is Dave Campbell. I'm the advocacy director with Bike East Bay. We're a bicycle advocacy group in Alameda and Contra Costa Counties. Some of your more longtime residents may remember us as the East Bay Bicycle Coalition, same group advocating for better bicycling, including right here in Livermore. Thursday, May 10th is Bike to Work Day coming up. I want to thank the City of Livermore for sponsoring Bike to Work Day, among many other cities in the East Bay. This is the first year we had Livermore on board as a sponsor, so thank you for that. Also here, fully in support of 407, the Iron Horse Trail gap closure. It's great to see Measure BB money put to work to build a great and much-needed bike improvement there. With this project, we're here to ask that this bikeway design get fixed. And let me just say the word dangerous. This design is dangerous. You're putting a cyclist eight feet, or in an eight-foot bike lane that is 12 feet from the curb. On this residence's left is cars going anywhere from 40 to 50 miles an hour, perhaps a yahoo driver late at night going even faster. And on your right is a bunch of right-turning traffic onto Isabel. That is just downright dangerous, and we have to stop this designs. The good news/bad news is Livermore's not the only city doing these designs. Lots of cities do it. Caltrans blesses it, it has to stop. The bike lane needs to move over to the curb. I'm going to leave a copy of this document here with the Public Works Director, or the engineer. Great, thank you. I have more copies, too. This is the new, modern, American standard. It's put out by the National Association of City Transportation Officials. I cite this in our letter to you today with a link. And the crux of this is, if the prevailing speeds are 25 miles an hour or higher, and the volumes are 6,000 cars or more per day, you need a protected facility. That is the new, modern standard. I think a lot of traffic engineers' eyes would just bug right out and go, "What the heck?" But that's the new standard. And it's actually a Caltrans standard now. Protected bike lanes and protected intersections are a Caltrans standard. It's no excuse that Caltrans owns some of this right-of-way, and they need to review that. That's their job. And it's certainly no excuse that we're coming forth late in the design, I acknowledge that. But it's no excuse to build a dangerous facility. We need to fix it. And it may require some right-of-way, and that's why this needs to be delayed, put off, until we can figure out the right-of-way issue. Once we have the right-of-way issue resolved, designing the bikeway facility on the right-of-way is relatively straightforward, but we've got to figure that piece out first. And that's why these designs cannot be approved and allow the project to move forward as is. We're not here to attack staff. We love working with staff, doing their hard work to build a bike network in the city. I think they're just relying on some outdated Caltrans standards that need to be fixed. These are the new ones, so thank you for your support.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, I'm going to close the comment period on 405, 406, 407. Let's go ahead and, let me get a motion for 405 and 407, since there appears to be more discussion on 406.
No, I want to talk about 407, too.
Oh, okay, very good, okay. Well, let's, okay, take it away.
Well, I'm going to start with 406.
Okay.
Okay. So, I'm a cyclist as well, and I frequently go through that intersection, so I'm pretty familiar. So, my question is, as much as anything, and maybe Mr. Campbell can answer my question, is that they have a new intersection, Pleasanton built a new bike intersection at the corner of Stanley, where Stanley crosses Burnell and Valley. That's pretty robust, I would say. Is that what the new standard looks like?
Yes.
And so, is that what you're suggesting should be implemented at Isabel and Jack London?
Yes.
So, can we do that?
So, I want to just...
Do you know what I'm suggesting about at Stanley and?
Valley, yes.
And Burnell? Okay.
So, we can't do that currently within the given rights-of-way. And I want to be very clear here, we are meeting current Caltrans standards. The guidelines that Mr. Campbell is referring to are just that guidelines. They are meant to provide a comfortable, comfortable environment for all ages and abilities of bicycling. The guidelines even state within them that there may be cases where you can't meet all ages and abilities in a facility. And so, as I mentioned, those are guidelines and not actual approved standards. The city does have plans as part of its Active Transportation Plan to take a look comprehensively at Jack London, to see what we should really do for the overall bicycle facility along there. It is one of our higher-rated facilities, and we intend to do that. It'll be, assuming the council approves, the Active Transportation Plan, we would follow up with the next step, which is a comprehensive look at that location, the entire corridor, not just that individual intersection. We have talked to Mr. Dunbar, I haven't spoken to Mr. Campbell, but Mr. Dunbar about his concerns. Although we meet the minimum standards, we did tell him that we're happy to go back to Caltrans. This is partially controlled intersection by Caltrans, to see if we could narrow up on the east, I'm sorry, the westbound direction, narrow up the right-turn lane so that we could widen the bike lane to beyond the minimum standard of four feet. And with respect to the eastbound direction, we have an eight-foot-wide bicycle lane, which far exceeds the minimum standard. We're happy to consider a buffered bike lane at that location. Again, we have to take it to Caltrans to get their approval. All of that fits within the current budget, because these are, striping tend to be fairly minor cost items, but it will require us to go back to Caltrans to get their final approval on.
Mr. Dunbar mentioned some bike plan. What is, what's that?
I think he's referring to our Active Transportation Plan, which, we've brought that as an informational item to you before. We intend to bring the final product to you in the next couple of months. And in that plan, we identified typical standards that we would like to employ in some of our facilities, and also where we should, how we should prioritize the facilities throughout the city. So, that's coming forward soon to you.
Okay, so going eastbound on Jack London, no, sorry, going westbound on Jack London, there's a current bike lane now, as Mr. Campbell pointed out, between the right-turn lane and going straight?
Correct.
And what's that, four feet wide, is that what you said? It's pretty narrow.
It's currently five foot wide.
Five feet wide. I thought I said in the report, I thought they were going to put in another lane to go straight? Is that what I read?
Correct, correct.
So, you're going to widen that area?
We aren't technically widening the area. There is adequate space within the current...
To restripe?
To restripe, yeah.
And where would the bike lane be at that point?
The bike lane will be between the right-turn lane and the through lane.
Okay, so it's still going to be in the same, essentially the same place?
Yes, 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 yes.
Going eastbound is pretty horrible.
Going eastbound is pretty horrible.
At this point?
Yeah, yes.
So, explain to me what, because there's virtually no bike lane there now.
Right, and so, we're putting in an eight-foot-wide bike lane.
Against the curb?
No, it's between the right-turn, there will be a free, a right-turn pocket, and the through lane.
The only difference between east and west is the width of the bike lane, then?
Correct. Except that we can make it what they call a buffered bike lane by striping a two-foot buffer, three-foot buffer, whichever we end up deciding, between the lane and the travel.
Are these all going to be green like the new regulations?
Our proposal is not to make them all green everywhere, but we are planning on putting in green highlight crosshatch wherever a conflict zone occurs. So, for instance, where the through lane becomes a through and a right, you put the hash marks in for the bike lane so that people are aware that, hey, this is where we have a vehicle conflict with the cyclists.
Okay. Were there any of the issues that Mr. Campbell or Mr. Dunbar brought up that can be implemented now to provide more safety than, I think you mentioned some earlier in your discussion here that...
Yeah, I do think that we can widen the bike lane on going westbound slightly, if we can get, we, again, I have to get Caltrans approval, but I think if the city goes to them and requests it, they would seriously consider our request. And in the eastbound, we can add, make it into a buffered bike lane. It technically isn't buffered bike lane right now, but that's a matter of striping.
Okay, well, anything we can do to provide more safety, I'd support.
Councilmember Spodovski?
So, to fully implement the standards that they're talking about, you would need to acquire right-of-way from Caltrans? Or from who?
From the adjacent businesses.
From the adjacent businesses. So, I would also like to point out that our engineer's estimate on this project was half a million, and our lowest bid came in at about $800,000. So, I don't know, I guess we could technically delay the award of contract, but any additional work, we would have to go out to bid again.
Right.
And right now, I mean, we received two bids on this project, and they were extremely high. And knowing what I know about the economy and how, you know, it doesn't look like it's slowing down, the economy is only growing, delaying this could cost us more money for the exact same project. So, I think a good balance of what Councilmember Carling was saying, do what we can now, but, you know, and then, you know, consider other options. But if we're talking about acquiring right-of-way from private businesses, not just Caltrans or their permission, that's extremely costly. And already, I mean, I think we're kind of in the hole with this thing in terms of our engineer's estimate. I mean, it's not unusual to have triple an engineer's estimate on some of these construction projects, because it's just, it's hard to get somebody to do things now. I mean, personally, it took me almost seven months to get a landscape contractor to do design at my regular job, and it's just like, everybody is super busy, and there's this premium on the price of projects. So, I'd be very concerned if we were to delay this. Also, is there any risk of the funding source going away if we delay? Are these dedicated funds that we're going to, I mean, we could hold? Because I know sometimes there are strings attached in terms of timing and identified projects and things like that.
So, a portion of these funds, a major portion of the funds, came from the developer, Gillig being one of the two developers that contributed. We, this project is way behind schedule for when we were supposed to have it implemented.
Because I think the CIP number was, what, the project number is 2015?
Yeah.
28? So, I hear what you're saying. I completely understand where you're coming from. I'm also very concerned, the speakers, that is. I'm also very concerned about further delays in the cost, and also in terms of acquiring private right-of-way. That gets very, very expensive, even if you have a willing seller. So, yeah, I can see moving forward, doing what we can do through this project, and then identifying it for future improvements.
Vice Mayor Warner?
I've got a couple of further questions. How much, it was referenced that we're going to be spending money now, and then we might have to redo something if we did, once we do get the right-of-way. How much is the redo cost?
Well, depending on what the actual final decision is to make, most of what we're putting in now on the east side is striping, and so that would be a fairly minor component to change, although there are some loops, loop detectors and stuff for the signal. But I would say most of it is fairly minor components. What we're really talking about is a widening to get additional space available.
So, let me understand that. So, the, there are two things, widening and then striping. So, most of the cost is widening and very little of striping, of striping? And then, should we get the, now with the rights-of-way, wouldn't we be widening into a different place?
Correct, correct.
So, what I'm trying to get at is that you widened a little bit, and then you put in the curbs, and then you widen more?
Correct.
So, it's, the redo cost is the curb?
There could be a little bit of curbing. Most of it will be striping and added pavement.
Oh, yeah, I guess where I'm at at the moment, and I don't, given the conversation, I understand the, you know, it's been since 15, and time all of a sudden is of the essence here, but it, where I'm at is, I would appreciate not voting on this tonight, and actually making sure I understood all of these factors better. And I would think that, given what was said here and from the speakers, that it would be possible to get everybody on the same page and say it makes sense. But I'm not comfortable with is that the people who ride the area and have a lot of expertise here are not satisfied with the design. And so, I would just like to see more alignment by everybody on this before we spend the money. And I think we should get the, go for the right-of-way.
Yeah, if I could. I just wanted to agree wholeheartedly with the other Bobs here, too. We have, this is something we shouldn't be deciding on tonight, because rider safety is the first on my list, not cost at this point. But I want to, I don't want to have any mishaps out there, because something is designed that may be based on an old standard. If there's a new one, let's explore that, let's look into it, see what we can do with that. Standards have changed over the years, and Mr. Campbell and I long ago have emailed each other on bicycle and trail use issues, as I've been in a wheelchair and so on, and compared notes. And I know he's generally very even-tempered and very practical when it comes to things. I'd really like to see that we can't put our heads together, come up with something that's going to maintain the safety of the riders first, and then we'll worry about... going to maintain the safety of the riders first, and then we'll worry about the expense to get to that.
I'd like to see a, I mean, one of the things that was missing in this, and it also pertains to 407, is sort of a drawing or something to illustrate the plans that you had. In 407, it was very hard for me to sort out from that drawing that was in our packet as to where the Iron Horse Trail is supposed to go. I mean, I couldn't even tell whether it was on the north or the south side of Stanley. So I would appreciate more, a clearer drawing. And for 406, I mean, I was a little surprised at the email that we got today that, I don't remember, maybe it was Mr. Campbell or somebody that sent us an email, but they seemed to be more knowledgeable about the plan there than I was. And I was relying on the material, the staff report, and I just, I mean, I could read what the words said, but it would have been a lot clearer for me, anyway, having ridden that particular intersection dozens and dozens of times. It would have been helpful if I'd had a clear drawing about current situation and future situation. And the same goes for 407. I'd like a little clarity exactly on, again, I read the words, but it, you know, you're going to loop under this and go over that, and a clearer drawing would have really helped.
Okay.
And another follow-up.
Vice Mayor Spodovski?
So do we have a rough estimate about, of how much right-of-way we would need to acquire and what the cost would be? I'm just wondering if, I don't, I'm trying to wrap my head around figures here.
We don't, and honestly, I would seriously suggest that we not do this as an intersection review. This, this project was primarily to widen Jaclyn and for the additional development that's already occurred on Gillick, that the bicycle facilities as a whole for Jaclyn need to be looked at comprehensively, and that, that, whatever that is, is really what I need to come back to you with in terms of how do we get bicycle facilities east-west across the city in the most favorable environment.
So the, looking into acquiring right-of-way, talking to the property owners, what kind of timeframe are we looking at if we don't approve this tonight?
Yeah.
And then going out to bid again?
Yeah, so if we're looking at it comprehensively, I would say it's a six-to-nine-month process to kind of look at that and come back to you.
The whole corridor?
Yeah, for the corridor.
And then this project would be included in that corridor plan? I'm trying to, no, I, I've just, if, if we are saying tonight, let's not do this, let's hold off and figure out what it would take to acquire the right-of-way, and then figure out, you know, negotiating with the property owners, I would assume, if we're saying we're not doing this because we want the right-of-way. Finding out the cost, the amount of right-of-way that we need, and negotiating with the property owners to acquire it, and then going back out to bid for this project, are we talking six-month delay, year, year and a half? I just, I, I'm kind of trying to, you know, if, if we're delaying tonight, what does that actually mean?
The total.
Because I don't believe it's a two-month delay while we look at something. If it, if it, you know, involves acquiring the right-of-way, I think that opens up a whole different can of worms. I mean, I can, I could see, okay, maybe delaying it a month or two to see what we can do within the parameters of this particular contract award, but if we are now expanding this to either let's redesign the intersection and/or let's wrap this in with a whole corridor plan, I, I just, again, I want to know what I'm doing tonight, not just saying, let's kick it back for two months, and then we'll see.
Can I ask a slightly different question in that regard, though? I thought I understood from reading the staff report that the real, the biggest issue is eastbound. Is that a fair assessment?
If you're asking.
For traffic?
Oh, for eastbound traffic, actually, both sides are an issue for traffic. The development is creating more traffic on the, into the eastbound approach. The left turners going westbound are the conflict with that eastbound traffic.
Yeah, I just wonder if there's a way that we could solve the, or help address the traffic issue for cars and get that going, because at least the eastbound direction for cars is pretty horrible, I think, in terms of curbs and.
So, so back to my original question, if I may, that's what this project would do, is address the traffic and some of the bicycle issues that we're looking at. My question still stands, what kind of delay are we looking at if we're saying, let's, you know, acquire additional right-of-way, let's negotiate with the private property owners, and then if we're wrapping this all into our city engineer is saying it should be looked at as an entire corridor, what kind of delay are we looking at?
So, so if that, the corridor analysis results in a right-of-way, which honestly, that looks like the only way to get a more environmental, a more all-abilities-type facility, then you're talking another, in addition to the six-to-nine months to do the corridor analysis, another six-to-nine months to get the right-of-way and then redesign, and so say a year and a half to two years, we'd be back with the project.
So this could be a year and a half to two years, and we don't know the, the cost potentially with this change, nor do we, do we have a funding source?
We just know it'll be a lot more.
Which, well, well, by, by putting this off, it will be a lot more.
Yeah.
Construction costs are.
No, I was just trying to figure out a way that we could do.
So one of the things your staff was trying to do is deal with this in a stepwise fashion.
Okay.
First was to deal with the significant impact for vehicle traffic that you currently have in the, in the corridor existing. At the same time, to make it no worse, and in most cases, better for bicycle traffic with that project, but essentially to not ultimately get it to its ultimate width and ultimate configuration. So what you are talking about is, one of the things you have when you have long vehicle backups, is vehicles acting in ways that you don't want them to do, which can sometimes create conflicts in the intersection. So your staff would recommend that we do this in a stepwise progression of doing the initial widening. We work to restripe and maximize sort of the buffer areas for the bicycle areas. And then ultimately, we do need to deal with the area as a complete corridor. And as you heard, the eighteen-to-twenty-four month, to have a project back before you, I think is a realistic timeframe for those sorts of items. That doesn't mean in the interim that we won't try and, within the right-of-way that we do have, try and make this situation better for both vehicles and bicyclists. But essentially, it is a two-step process here, and as people noted, we ultimately have to go through a plan approval process, and we're assuming that's going to get approved, and then go through a number of steps to do a study of the corridor, ultimate property acquisition, then redesign and rebid. You did hear, however, that the bulk of the improvements that you're putting in are not throwaway. They would be reutilized in an ultimate configuration, even if that was wider.
It's hard for me to believe that it'd be worse than it is now. I ride there frequently, several times a week. It's hard for me to believe that, I mean, I, I mean, I understand the point, and I certainly would like more protection there, but it's hard for me to believe that the, what we're trying to get through here would be worse than it is today, less safe. I'm not talking about whether or not the Caltrans standards or whatever, I'm just suggesting it's hard for me to understand that whatever we do in the current plan would be less safe than the way it is today.
But what I've heard from staff is that this is not the permanent fix.
Oh, I get that.
That this is a temporary fix, then the second step, one thing, I, I agree with Councilmember Recumber, I'm very concerned about safety. And yes, cost is a consideration, but cost pales in comparison to creating an unsafe condition. If this can make it more safe in this two-step process as we move ahead, that these are initial steps, I'm concerned about the cost of redoing, you know, going in, doing something, and then having to go back through and do it again. It's like the whole thing about paving a street and then digging it up to put in a pipeline. These things do need to be staged correctly. So, and that happened when I lived in Hayward. But, but, yes, so this is a two-step process that is going to improve safety, and it's not an inordinate cost to go back and do the second step. I think incrementally, we're to the better, because as you said, it can't get much worse. So if there's, if this isn't the permanent fix, but it gets us to that, if this were to pass tonight, would you be able to go back and talk with the folks that have concerns and see, because there's, there's a 10% contingency in the project already? Could we then address those concerns and perhaps bring everybody on board and get some additional consensus as Vice Mayor Warner?
If, what, we're asking these, I could try, I mean, there's been a lot of conversation here. So the things that we need to establish in my mind that have come up here is that doing something now makes it more safe than it is now compared to waiting two years to do something that might be the best. So that's the first question. And I kind of heard the rumblings in the audience that there wasn't consensus on that. So we can declare it from here, but I personally seem, it seems to me that that would be kind of obvious. But if there, if we don't have agreement amongst the community, the larger community that rides it all the time, then there's something obvious we're not seeing. But it would seem to me that if, and I'm not saying, don't approve this and wait for two years. I'm just suggesting is that the next time this could come back to us is what, in two weeks or something? Or when, when's the next meeting? If we just said, we can do two ways. We can, we can authorize it now and then try and get consensus, or we can wait a couple of weeks and see if there's any real issue. But I don't think I've heard one yet. But I'd like, but, so what's the time delay? Not six months or a year or anything like that. I was saying, what's the minimum time delay, the next thing, if we didn't do this tonight, and we wait, and we took a few, a week or two to just make sure everybody's on board?
You would normally return to your second meeting in May. Unfortunately, your second meeting in May is a holiday, so you'd be back to your first meeting in June.
So is that a big deal? In terms of we, are we going to have damages and all of this kind of stuff, why can't we wait another couple of weeks just to get clarity on this? And we heard that maybe the diagram wasn't there as best. I'm, I'm just, don't understand why we can't wait a couple of weeks, get more clarity here. And it kind of bothers me that we're into this level of detail at this stage, and it doesn't seem the way we ought to be doing this kind of business. And that's part of the reason why I'm not anxious to try and approve this tonight with this level of questioning and the concern from the community. So I just want, couple of weeks, let's get a clear report that everybody agrees on, and if there is some safety issue that is worsened by making these changes, I'd like to know it. But I don't, I can't imagine it. And, and one last thing. We've talked about whether it's the striping or the curbs or this or that, and I would think in a week or two, you could come back with a clearer estimate of how, what's the redo cost of this contract that would occur once we got the larger right-of-way and we widened it? And you could do a, you know, a quick calculation, you're not going to do it tonight. So it's, well, it's small, and it's this and that. I would just like a, a better number, just so that we put the concerns to rest.
Well, can I bring up one of my initial or original points? That the sticky wicket here is you have X amount of right-of-way. And in my original comments, it was, you know, approve this tonight and work with the groups where we can within the right-of-way that we have now. So the real question isn't whether anything can change in two weeks or by June. The question is, can we get an estimate on how much right-of-way we would need to acquire from private parties, how much that would cost, and if there are willing sellers, I assume we would need a willing participant, I hope they are, and in most cases, I believe most people would be, but what entities do we have to deal with to acquire this right-of-way? That, that is the question. If we cannot get the right-of-way, then we do have to enter certain city processes to do so. And to me, that, that's the question, and I think that takes more than a couple of weeks or a month or two to figure out. So I, I just don't think that there's an easy answer to this, that this project would improve the situation, as we're being told by our city engineer, that it would improve the, the traffic flow and, and the bicycle safety in the area, not to the extent that some people are asking, and I acknowledge that, and I would like to look at it as an entire corridor, as it should be. We shouldn't just improve one intersection for several hundred feet down the way, then it's completely the opposite of what we're doing. We should look at this as a corridor plan, and at the same time, you know, figuring out what land do we have to play with? And I don't think that's a two-week or a two-month answer when you're talking about right-of-way. These issues, I mean, acquiring right-of-way gets very, very tricky sometimes. So, I mean, if we're voting not to do it tonight, I think we are delaying this for, I don't know how long, what staff's estimate would be for the private right-of-way acquisition.
Well, I don't think, you know, somehow we're not on the same page. I didn't say that by saying delaying it tonight, that we waited two years and we went through all of that.
I didn't say that either.
Well, you said that if we don't vote on it tonight, we're going down a long path.
It's several months, probably.
Several months. And I just heard that this could come back in a couple of weeks. So I don't understand how that you get from a couple of weeks to several months.
Okay, can I ask a question?
Well, just a second. We were, if it came back, I was told it could come back and we could vote in two weeks, not several months. But the point was, that I was making is, and it's my preference, is that the community that is really concerned about the, the bike lanes be on board. And if it, and I would think that they, we could understand that it was a one- or two-year process to get the right-of-way, and it's just simply, shouldn't we go do this now and make some improvements, realizing that if we don't do this, it'll stay in its current condition for several years? And that's kind of the thing. And I'm just saying, do we have a big deal if bringing this back in two weeks after the community is on board?
It was June.
More like six weeks, and the question is, what happens to the bids? I think Mark was asking.
So the, we would have to ask for an extension of the bid date. As you know, the bid climate right now is really tough. Contractors got more work than they can handle, which is why the prices are coming in the way they are. We would hope that they would extend their bid, but I have no guarantees that that would happen.
What is the, how, how much time is in the bid currently to start construction?
Oh, you mean how long was the bid good for?
Right.
So we typically require a 60-day, that they guarantee their bid for 60 days. I don't remember the date they came in, but I can get that date for you.
Okay. So if we're doing, making up the agenda for the next meeting Thursday, probably, could you just put this on to the May 14th and update the staff report?
You have a workshop on that meeting, you're not set up to take action. On the second meeting, the first meeting, where are we? We are, yeah, the 14th. That item, you can essentially, you'll get, your written staff work will essentially be fundamentally what you have. We can provide you an oral update at the meeting.
Right, but that would get us back to us on the 14th, which is going to be an incredible meeting, but.
Why, pardon me? What am I missing here? What's incredible?
That's the Isabel Neighborhood Plan.
Oh, right.
So, but could that, after the conversation with the, the cycling community, and I consider you a big part of that, Councilmember Carling, we, it would be coming back on presumably consent, but then we would get an update, the cycling community would have had input, and presumably not a significant delay, but we could have some meaningful, and you could have the diagrams that, that you were interested in.
You could do that, right. Thank you.
So again, a clarifying question, I'm sorry, but how long would it take you to calculate the right-of-way that we would need, and also estimate the cost acquisition of that right-of-way?
And part of our.
Outside of this parameter that we may or may not be approving tonight.
Right, and, and part of our challenge there is we're. And part of our challenge there is we're, we don't have an approved plan. We have not completed the corridor study. And so you're, and while our engineers are comfortable doing estimates, we're sort of got an estimate on top of a guess on top of an estimate. So we're not going to have a terribly satisfying number in the very short run until we've done the corridor study and established the standards for the corridor. And I don't have that, and I'm not going to have that. And that was sort of what led to that much longer number you had. In 24 months, I'll be able to bring you back a bright shiny project consistent with that quarter study, which is not done, which is consistent with the plan, which is not approved.
But what we're looking to do is to implement some safety improvements along that stretch to sort of carry us through until we ultimately come up with a final plan.
And with the current discussion item on the floor of a few more weeks to have a discussion, we'll at least very much either come to grand consensus, which would be my fundamental hope, or very much sharpen the disagreements down to something very specific for you to consider. And we can certainly do that as far as an oral update and some additional diagrams at your next meeting.
Okay.
And with that, our recommendation would be, if that's your direction, to continue this particular item to your next meeting.
And we would have diagrams and.
You'd have better diagrams and you'd have an oral update to the staff report. The staff report would remain fundamentally unchanged.
And we bring it back, you know, certainly on consent, if everybody has all their answers. Or we could pull up for continued discussions like we did tonight.
Or you'll decide you're just not going to do the project.
Okay.
All those are options.
Is that for the staff? All right. Well, with all that, is there a motion?
Motion what?
A motion to continue? Shall we just, would it be preferable to table, preferable to make a motion to bring it back?
If there's a motion.
With those considerations?
If there's a desire to continue the item, there should be a motion and direction of staff to return at a future date with this item. So if you want to continue to the next meeting, the motion will be moved to continue this item, which is 4.06. 06 to your next.
With the improvements as articulated by the council.
Yes. That would be your motion. And if it's seconded, vote on that and that will take care of that item.
So I'll move that.
I'll second.
And a clarifying question for the vote. And the next meeting would be?
The 14th.
The 14th. That's the same as the.
We would put that on as it matters. That would immediately follow your Isabel plan.
Okay. I'm good. It's two weeks.
All right. It's been moved and seconded, what he said. Is there discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So we'll see this back in a couple of weeks. And I would ask everyone that, thank you for coming tonight. I know it's, Dave, I usually see you at the ACTC. Thank you for making your way out here and thank you for your comments tonight. I think this will be better for those comments. And certainly if you could work with Ms. Sheets and provide your concerns and we can certainly get those coming back in three weeks. Thank you.
Should I move to accept 4.05 and 4.07?
Yes. Okay, 4.05 and 4.07, moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Those also passed unanimously, those are the gap measures. Wow, I think this is a record for the consent calendar.
Shall we take a break?
Did you want to take about five minutes? We're at nine o'clock. Okay. We'll take a short break. We'll be back here shortly after nine o'clock, like five minutes after. Okay, well, welcome back to the second half of the April 23rd meeting in the Livermore City Council. Bringing it back, we've finally got through the citizens forum and the consent calendar. Moving on to 5.01. This is the fire hazard abatement program. We have Fire Marshal Ryan Rucker here. Again, 5.01, staff report.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. Ryan Rucker, Fire Marshal for Livermore Pleasanton Fire Department. For an item that I'm sure will generate a little bit less conversation. On April 19th, April 9th, 2018, the City Council adopted Resolution 2018-45 declaring existing conditions of growing weeds, accumulated refuse, rubbish or dirt on private property and streets. Parkwayes and sidewalks adjacent to each parcel of real property are a public nuisance and should be abated. Parcel owners have been advised to abate weeds and debris, which constitute fire hazards. Abatement standards have been mailed to owners or posted conspicuously on their property in cases where a mailing address was insufficient. Property owners can avoid enforcement by the city by completing abatement work in accordance with guidelines or protest the need to abate hazards at this public hearing. Staff recommends that the City Council consider any and all protests. And if council finds it appropriate, adopt a resolution overruling protests and direct staff to proceed with necessary weed abatement on all parcels requesting abatement. Staff is available for questions.
Okay, any questions for staff at this point?
I was just double checking that my wife didn't have you put me on the list here.
Not at all.
A lack of yard work.
No, sir.
No, not at all. Just one question. Some of the districts with a large number of parcels above and beyond, you know, knocking on doors and posting, do we have any effort trying to actually contact them directly? Case in point, I just see there's 12 parcels on here from BART. I don't know if we have a.
Yes, we contact them as well. In fact, we've been involved with some of the larger parcel owners here recently that have jumped on it earlier this season to go open some fire access gates to allow them to start the process earlier. So yes, we're in contact with all of those larger parcel owners as well.
Great, thank you.
We could work out a deal with them that they could clear BART to Livermore and then take out the weeds at the same time.
Just shows their maintenance standards. Anyway.
Okay, any questions for staff at this point? Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing. I don't have any cards. So with that, I'm going to close the public hearing, bring it back to the council. Is there a recommended action? Do we have a motion?
I'll move approval.
Moved by Councilmember Spodolski.
And I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Coomer. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed unanimously. Okay, moving on to 5.02. This is the negotiating a development agreement for off-site improvements for Legacy at Livermore First and South L.
Thank you, Mayor Marchand and councilmembers. This is a request for authorization to negotiate a development agreement between the City of Livermore and Legacy Partners for Legacy's proposed redevelopment of the former Growth Brothers Chevrolet site in the downtown core at the corner of First Street and South L. Legacy Partners proposes to develop a mixed-use project that includes 222 apartments and approximately 14,000 square feet of retail fronting on First Street. Public improvements include new parallel parking spaces along Railroad and South L Street, as well as angled parking along M Street. And then an extension of the First Street flex zone improvements along the project's First Street frontage. Those flex zone improvements include the angled parking with enhanced paving, trellises and trees and other side amenities. Due to an unanticipated delay in the project timeline, Legacy has requested a development agreement to vest their development impact fees at the current rates for one year. In exchange for that fee vesting, the city has requested that Legacy design and construct First Street flex zone improvements along the south side of First Street across from the project. The design and installation of those improvements would be subject to city reimbursement of Legacy's direct costs. The public benefit in this agreement is that those improvements would be built in one phase together, which is a more cost-effective approach and results in less disruption to the public, having the project done at once rather than in multiple stages. The City Council's authorization to negotiate the development agreement is not an approval of the agreement. With the council's authorization, staff will negotiate the final terms of the agreement and then return to both the Planning Commission and the City Council at future public hearings. It's at staff's overview and we're available for questions.
Questions?
No.
Okay. I'm going to open the public hearing. I have four speakers. David Rounds, John Stein, Brandon Evans. Mr. Rounds.
Thank you. So you all are to be commended for what you're doing to bring housing downtown. Tonight's item about the Legacy Partners development on the old Growth Brothers lot is a perfect example of how the city can work with developers of privately owned land to provide the kind of infrastructure that will benefit the citizenry as well as benefiting the developer. Another example is the Chestnut Square development of 158 units and the planned development to help address homeless, low-income, senior and market-rate housing. Chestnut Square is happening because you had the foresight to bank land purchased in part with redevelopment funds. The Stockman's Park, low-income, senior and veterans' housing development on Pacific Avenue is another good example of a creative solution to address an important need. Meanwhile, you've worked with private developers and landowners for the future development of the 120 or so units that will be on the former Cotteroli Motors property. And the just completed and sold-out development, and I don't know how many units there are, that sits right next to the railroad tracks between First Street and Old First Street. And then there's Sunflower Hill and Meridian Station. And I'm sure I'm forgetting some, and I do have no doubt that there will be more. These are solid examples of the city working mostly with private landowners to provide the infill housing we all agreed to build downtown. So for the life of me, I do not understand why the same creativity was not used to further reduce the housing on the property the city actually owns at the Lucky's Catalyst site. Instead of using this last piece of significant property in the heart of downtown to create the most beautiful and vibrant destination possible with a significant park and performance area, you chose to build workforce apartments. Apartments that should be buildable elsewhere. I believe you when you say that it is complicated to solve this issue downtown, but I do not believe it is impossible. And I am certain it will be hard to do. But until others and myself are convinced that it is impossible, I have no choice but to believe that the council just does not have the vision, the will or the desire to do what might be difficult, but which could be remarkable, lasting and a benefit to all. It's not too late to fix this downtown plan so that it is as perfect as it can be. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rounds. John Stein, Brandon Evans, Brian Werner.
John Stein, 1334 Cathy Court. I noticed there's a tree removal as part of the development agreement. The site plan, just looking at it, seems to have a lot of trees. But I would urge that when the trees are selected, they be in scale with the building. Don't plant crepe myrtles next to a four-story building. Maybe a London plane or a Siberian elm or a tall tree that at maturity will enhance the building rather than be dwarfed by it. Also on First Street with the upgrades, this is the third time we're expanding that, and I urge you avoid bluestone. It's hard to maintain. It's a tripping hazard. It's difficult to repair. And we've made that mistake now twice. Let's not do it three times. And finally, it's nice to see a development with state-of-the-art amenities. Things like elevators, submerged parking, indoor hallways, things that we haven't had in Livermore in apartment complexes up until now. But this is, we're finally moving into the 20th century. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stein. Brandon Evans and Brian Werner. Mr. Evans.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Brandon Evans and I'm a longtime resident of Livermore. I'm an apprentice with the International Brotherhood of Electric Workers, local 595, out of Dublin, California. And as some of you may know, that means that I'm enrolled in an accredited college program that when completed, I will have a lifelong career that will allow me to raise a family within my community. Staff is recommending that you enter a development agreement for the Legacy at Livermore project, and I think you should. But I don't think that you should sell yourself short. As this project is built out, there could be dozens of apprentices on it or like some other projects in our community, there could be few, if any, apprentice slots. You can place into the development agreement's requirements that the developer have apprentices be part of the construction workforce. This means that more young workers and veterans can have a shot at the American dream. So far, this developer has not returned calls from representatives of the local construction workforce. That likely means that they want to have a workforce brought into the area with few apprentices on the job. If that is not the case, the developer should have no problem with language encouraging people like me that can help build my town while I finish my apprenticeship. So far, I've had the privilege and the honor to work underneath and be trained by a number of very talented and knowledgeable individuals, some of them who are in this room today. And I would just like the opportunity to use that skillset within my own community, if at all possible. Thank you for your time and consideration regarding this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Brian Werner. Mr. Werner.
Good evening. Good evening, councilmembers and mayor. I'm here tonight. I am with the Construction Trades here in the room. I would really like to see you guys put some agreements on this as far as local hire requirements, reinvesting the community dollars back into this community and apprenticeship standards on this. If we could get everybody to rise in the room here that's with me. This shows all the local apprentices that are in this room, all right? These people live here and work here. We don't want to be driving by this project. We want to be on this project. Thank you.
Thank you much, Mr. Werner. Okay, that's all the cards I have. We're going to close the public hearing, bring it back to the council. Comments from the council?
I had a quick question for staff. So tonight, we are directing you to go negotiate a development agreement. So the process for that would be, then staff will later on come back and give us the details of the proposed agreement. And then we can discuss the finer details as to what we think works and what doesn't. So what I'm trying to get at is tonight, we're not really giving you direction on what to say or what to negotiate with that development agreement. It's more of a, we're going to, just trying to get a feel.
You are authorized in the negotiation. Livermore Development Code has an extra step in it versus state law, where the council's actually made aware that we are beginning the process of entering into a development agreement. You'll actually consider the development agreement when you consider the entire project. That way you put it in context with all of the items included in the project, all of the various approvals needed for that and the actual approval of the fine points of the development agreement at that time.
Okay.
Yeah, the only thing I think we're doing today is vesting the fees in exchange for striping on the south side or.
You are not actually doing that. That is essentially what we are asking permission to begin the negotiation process.
Oh, fine, okay, right.
When the item returns, you'll determine whether in its final form, that's actually a good deal.
I see, okay. Thanks for that clarity.
Following up to my question, what are our past practices for putting in conditions for local labor? What is our ability to do so, if there's any restrictions? I'd like just a response to that.
The city has not included those requirements on previous projects.
Ever?
Ever.
And our ability to do so would be, are there any restrictions?
With regard to an agreement, you have a great deal of latitude to explore that. We can have, include as part of the conversation. It's not something you can impose unilaterally, such as a local ordinance or regulation.
So it can't be local ordinance or regulation? It's on a case-by-case basis?
It's on a case-by-case basis when you have a contract before you. It's on a contractual basis.
Okay.
When we have a contract before us?
That is correct. The DA would constitute a contract. So you actually can negotiate for that to see if there's any will there. And there's a give and take. What would the concession be by the city if that were the ask? So that could be part of the negotiations.
All right.
So I just want to clarify, what we're doing is giving you the authorization to go ahead and negotiate. And that because we're doing this with the fees, that means it goes back through the Planning Commission? Is that correct?
The development agreement will get a recommendation from the Planning Commission and a final decision by the council.
So it'll go back, so the whole project goes back through the Planning Commission?
Comes to you for a final.
The request, various.
The request, various requests, the trees and everything, that goes, that's most appropriate at the Planning Commission at that point? And some of these other things, so we're going to, we're just going around the horn on this one again.
Quickly, hopefully.
Right, so, but that's what it is, so we're just, I just want to make sure that was my understanding. Okay, so in that case, do you have a motion?
I move we approve. Staff's recommendation.
Moved by Councilmember Carling, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, seconded by Councilmember Coomer. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed unanimously. Okay, this will be coming back. All right, thank you, thank you for your comments tonight. Okay, and six point oh one, discussion of direction regarding debt management. Mr. Alessio.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. The item before you tonight is a proposed debt management disclosure policy. So California... So as required by Government Code, Section eighty-five fifty-five, subsection I, also known as Senate Bill ten twenty-nine, the city is required to adopt a debt policy. Government Code, Section eighty-five fifty-five, was actually adopted by the state to enhance the state's ability to track and report on all outstanding local government debt. It sets parameters for issuing debt, managing debt, and debt portfolio and provides that guidance be available to the decision makers. Adherence to debt policy is viewed positively by a rating agency and helps ensure sound decisions regarding debt, sound decisions regarding debt are made. So Section eighty-five fifty-five has five elements that compose, that are required in your debt policy. The debt policy must propose a purpose for which the debt may be used, which types of debt may be used, the relationship of the debt to the issuer's capital improvement plan, goals related to the issuer's planning goals and objectives, and then internal controls necessary to ensure proceeds from debt issuances are used as they're intended. So the new, the law imposes new requirements that each time the city goes to issue debt, it must submit to the state agency a certification that the city has actually adopted a local debt policy and that the contemplated bond issue is consistent with the adopted policy, or we won't be able to actually issue any further debt. So we're taking the opportunity to do a couple of things on top of what Section eighty-five fifty-five requires. And for the city of Livermore, some of the things that are important for us are addressed, they include, the proposed debt policy is designed to ensure the proper due diligence is performed for each debt transaction the city enters into. Now this includes analysis of debt capacity and affordability, maintenance of the city's sound credit rating, and the determination of potential risks and benefits of a debt issue. The proposed debt policy is designed to safeguard the city funds and maintain fiscal stability. So some of the key points in the debt policy that aren't strictly required by Section eighty-five fifty-five are the debt policy we're proposing restricts the use of debt for the acquisition, development, or replacement of an asset as a useful life of thirty or more years. So we're suggesting you don't lease big equipment like maybe fire trucks, which can cost a couple million dollars, and you can finance those. Instead, we're suggesting you only issue debt for items of infrastructure with thirty years useful life. We're also recommending that we limit debt service costs in the general fund to no more than seven and a half percent of general fund revenues. So you may recall that we frequently will bring a League of California Cities Fiscal Health Tool with the red, green and yellow indicators. One of the items on there talks about your ability to to scale back in hard times and limiting such things that you can't stop paying on salaries and other costs. So in there, they suggest limiting your debt service to ten percent. When we actually look at our cost structure, we further recommend limiting it to seven and a half percent based on the structure of our general fund expenses. In addition, we would also strive to have level debt service payments over the life of the debt unless there was a circumstance that called for it to be done differently. When I started here about eight years ago, most of our debt was backloaded. And as we go to refinance and replace it, what we're doing is trying to create a more level debt service schedule, and we think that that will help your ability and provide flexibility in the future to manage the city's finances. Issuing debt commits a portion of the city's revenues for a very lengthy time period, that's why having a policy is important, and it may limit the city's flexibility to respond to changing service priorities, revenues and structures. So those are the main tenants of the policy. If you have questions, I'm here to answer them.
Questions? Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I've got one, you've got the seven and a half percent, but could you put that in perspective, so have we, what the number's been historically and the reasonableness of the seven and a half percent?
Sure, so right now, our debt service is about five percent, a little bit higher than five percent. One of the reasons is that we've paid off a piece of debt, and we were preparing to develop the downtown, so we wanted to keep some capacity. But our debt percentage has ranged over the past fifteen years from as low as five percent, where we sit now, all the way up to about eight percent. And the average number is about six point eight.
Councilmember Carling?
So on, I'm a little confused by something in the report where you say that cost, salaries and benefits are about eighty-five percent of operating expenditures today? On page one ninety-eight. So I'm just... Mark sees it. And then you talk about five...
So that's actually fixed costs? So those are...
I'm just, I'm just, I'm a little confused about the addition here, so that's what I need your help, my, your help in helping me understand. If eighty-five percent is the fixed costs, then there's five percent for the debt services we talk about today. And if we, if the debt service were to increase another five percent, then we'd be at ninety, but why isn't it ninety-five?
So actually, the five percent is already part of the eighty-five?
Oh, it is.
Yes. So if you read the sentence, it's eighty-five percent of operating expenditures...
Oh, I see, with debt services contributing five percent of expenditures, okay, so that's part of the eighty-five?
Yes, it is.
Oh, okay, I misunderstood that, thanks.
Councilmember Coomer?
So let's say that seven and a half percent was five percent, would that restrict your flexibility when it came to acquiring debt and capitalization of projects and things?
Right now, we're sitting at five percent, so that would mean that you wouldn't be able to refinance your current debt from a variable to a fixed, which we may want to do at some point in the near future, and you wouldn't be able to issue any new debt because we would already be at the five percent.
Thank you for the explanation, I had a question about that today, so I want to bring it to your attention, thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
I just have a comment, I think it's the right thing to do to have the policy, and I think the seven and a half percent is no more, is, we wouldn't want to go above that. So I'm happy with this, with all the terms you've suggested.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, I have no comment cards, so willing to make a motion to adopt the resolution?
I'll do, I'll make the motion, we adopt this resolution?
I'll second.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Werner, seconded by Councilmember Spodowski. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed, it passed unanimously? Very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And with that... Okay, with that, council reports and matters initiated. Councilmember Coomer?
Well, I'll start off down here, how about that? Well, it started with Friday, the thirteenth. I was part of an ADA focus group with the Coastal Conservancy, which opened up avenues which could potentially mean money to us, provided depending on how we want to, how creatively we want to get in on things like that. But it was great to see what the Coastal Conservancy is thinking of doing with a lot of coastal, meaning most of the middle of the state, west California, and how we could be a part of that with just a little thinking about it, but it was, it was good to attend and good to have some comment to that. The eighteenth was the groundbreaking for the Chestnut Square, in which I turned a shovel, it did not bite. And it was a fun event because I think it's a classic, really good project, it's just a it means so much to so many, and I'm just, the quicker that gets done, the better, but it was great to start it off and I'll be there with the council members that attended. On the twentieth, Tri Valley Haven had a walk downtown to a candlelight march to promote awareness of sexual assault and domestic violence. And so I joined along with them in walking up and down First Street and met a really a great bunch of people who were willing to engage in conversation along the way, as it was, more than we thought, kind of stretched us out, and it shows that there is a need for this awareness, and I was glad to be part of it. Attended Lauda Projects and Services Committee meeting this afternoon, which we essentially, we were sent forward to the board a an MOU, a method of, a memorandum of understanding for the Los Pecitas College funding, which was neat, it was an overwhelming student body up there, decided it was a good thing for them to have, ninety percent voted for it of the student body, and and with the Los Pecitas Board getting in on it as well as us, we think it's a good idea, so it's good. But I think that about dries me up.
Okay, Councilmember Carling?
Thank you. So on the eleventh, I sit on the Community Monitoring Committee for the landfill. We meet quarterly to hear from the community monitor, who reports on the landfill to the Community Monitoring Committee, so if you follow that, good for you. On the twelfth, yeah, on the twelfth, I stopped one of my two meetings a month for Stop Waste, is the committee meeting on the twelfth, and as Councilmember Coomer mentioned, several of us participated in the Chestnut Square groundbreaking, which was a terrific event, and again, I think we're all looking forward to that being completed and that project providing new opportunities for the elderly in our community. On the nineteenth, the mayor and I went to the Bankhead Chairs Luncheon, which was also a great event, supporting the Bankhead. And regarding matters initiated, we had, and I don't exactly know what to ask about this, so I looked for some help about Meals on Wheels, is there a way that we can get some report about what we do now, or?
Your staff could provide a report on sort of Meals on Wheels overall funding over the past several years, and what part of that we make up from time to time.
Would you please, I mean, if others agree to that, I, we...
One, two, three, four, six...
I think it was on several, several lists up here, but also, is this the result of the federal government cutting funding to Meals on Wheels?
Well, I'd tell you what my belief is, but actually, why don't you, I'll hold you in suspense until we get the report back.
Okay. I would appreciate, I would appreciate that, thank you very much.
Okay, very good, thank you. Councilmember Spodowski?
Sure, I have a few updates, we had our TVTC, Tri Valley Transportation Council, meeting. The big news there is, it looks like almost all the lists are off, or all the projects are off the list, and we're ready to start a new one, so it's things like the Highway eighty-four, you know, widening, thank you TVTC funding for that, other, you know, really great projects, so hopefully the next round will be just as snazzy as this round. East Bay Community Choice Energy update, we're about to roll out Phase One, I believe that's to commercial customers. We have a base rate and a carbon-free rate, so if people wanted to pay a little extra, they can get their energy from carbon-free sources. And during Phase Two, we will have a hundred percent renewable choice as well. So if you want to go just above the carbon-free, you can choose to be a hundred percent renewable. Under matters initiated, initiated because of this, I would like to either schedule it for a future council agenda item. I assume, as a city, we are not opting out of the East Bay Community Choice as a, as a partner. But what I would like to discuss is that when Phase Two rolls out and there are the three energy options, what benefits we would have as a city should we choose to go either carbon-free or a hundred percent renewable for our city facilities? So I don't know if that helps us meet our climate action goals, if that would help anywhere else, you know, achieving lead status with whatever buildings we may be building now or in the future, but I think that that would be a good discussion topic for us to choose which route we want to go.
Concurrents on that?
Made it, so I'm nodding my own head.
All right, there we go. We can bring back further information on that, as you know, our base information to this time is to switch the community, the different classes of your customers over at the base rates and allow opting up, as it were, as an individual question. We'll bring an item back for your discussion of, at least for the residential customers, which, there's still a little bit of time left on them.
Well, I'm not, I'm not discussing residential customers at all, I'm just talking city-owned facilities.
Very good.
We are the rate payer, I would, yeah, I very clearly would never suggest that we opt all of our residents up to another level.
All right, I understand the direction now, so this essentially would be for opting the city facilities.
City facilities, so where the city of Livermore is the actual rate payer, we are cutting the check, let's figure out what level would benefit the city-owned facility.
We can bring information back on that.
Okay. And then the, the third item, it was a question from the last council meeting, and there was a little discussion during matters initiated about term limits, and the, our city attorney issued an opinion, I was wondering if we could just get a quick write-up about that? I think it would be beneficial to just make sure we're all a hundred percent clear.
Just to be clear, so is the request for something to be come back in a future council meeting, or just a memo to council?
I'm trying to, I think a memo to council would suffice for now. I just want to make sure that we get it out there, and it's a public record, in case anybody decides to do something with it at a future date, that here is the discussion memorialized by you in writing your opinion and whatever research you've done on the matter. Here it is, however we best get that out to the community or make it available, could be something that, I don't know, we post on the website, you just, a memo and post it on the website, I don't think we need a agendized item or discussion.
Is that the pleasure of council? One, two, three, okay.
Very good, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Let's see, in terms of committee meetings, I went to LDI and and that was a regular business meeting, so there's nothing to really report from that. Although there is, you know, we're getting ready for all the celebrations coming up next month, so make sure we want to be there. Stockman's Park, et cetera. The, one thing I want to do, just one follow-up on that Meals and Wheels, Meals on Wheels. What I wrote down is, I really want to understand the financials there, so, you know, cost per resident, where's the funding gap? Just kind of put it in perspective, where was the funding coming from, where did it disappear? Was it a increase in demand and/or cutting of funding and from where? So just, when you do that report, just want to make sure it's, really understand the financials and the drivers. So on another matters initiated, I know we're doing, you know, we're getting underway here, we're taking down buildings, we're disturbing parking, and we're, what I'm interested in, it would be just a memo to council, would be, what is the plan? As you, and I know you're probably still formulating it, but within the next few weeks or whatever is reasonable, would like to know what... would like to know what the plan is, how we're going to build the street, what's going to happen. I think I'm detecting there's still some concern in the community, and they're not a full understanding that we're committed to having as much parking as we have now and, and meeting all the increased needs, so I think we continue to need to get that message out. And I think something, I don't know when is the appropriate time, but, you know, the longer-term vision for Livermore and where's the center, and, you know, what's, what's the parking around Second Street? I mean, we're really, we've got the housing going in kind of north of First Street for the most part, but, you know, when you think out into the future, the next set of growth is going to be along Second Street, so it can just maybe allude to that longer-term vision as to why, what we're doing with the parking. And the other thing that's included in there is we think about where the high-value spots are. We might need to think about where we're eventually going to, and need to keep track of how long people stay there and, and have an impact, so that where we're, what are the high-value spots, and what are, and that we acknowledge those, and that we, for instance, don't want the employees of the businesses to use those high-value spots, so there might be some parking time limits.
Just to clarify, when we're talking about the high-value spots, we are talking about parking spaces in downtown?
Right.
And that would drive, could drive time limits or other things.
Right, so what I'm trying to think about is that there's the short-term parking plan, but something I think that we also need to have is this longer-term vision of knowing that once we get these developments in, we're going to have the high-value spots, we're going to maybe have to monitor the length of time of stay, and that where do we envision the next growth in the retail part for downtown, and how it all kind of makes sense? Some kind of short-term, this is what we're doing, this is how we're going to build the downtown, but longer-term, just think about this in the larger context, because I think people don't maybe fully appreciate where the center of town is and is going to be, and it's not necessarily, you know, at one end, but it's that, you know, why that garage makes sense, basically. Then, then the other thing that I would request, and it's come up a couple of times, and Mr. Stein mentioned it again, is if you, if we could get from the city attorney a memo on the why housing is associated with the downtown site, and I believe we've talked to it a couple of times, it is a little bit convoluted to understand all of this, and I think a memo, trying to explain it to the people who are interested could be helpful. So, we have heads nodding for that memo?
Well, David Rounds mentioned that tonight, too, like, you know, why was that purchased with housing funds?
Well, I think it goes deeper than that. I don't, I don't necessarily even know if a memo would satisfy the critics. What they are looking for is every document related to the site, the history, complete from, I don't know, whatever we purchased or were involved with it. I know staff has provided some documents that were readily available to some residents who have asked, as we heard, what was it, a council meeting ago or two council meetings ago, that somebody requested and they never heard back. I've been part of that process of trying to get people the information, and I know staff is in the process of pulling more records, so I, I think if we do have a memo, it has to be with the associated documentation, so, I mean, people are just, you know, it's, it's a, we must prove to them that this is the way it is.
Yeah, okay, so it, okay, so, I don't know how we, I think normally, we're just supposed to nod heads or something, but they, I'm requesting the housing memo, kind of explain the situation as to why housing is associated with the site, and we can properly footnote it with links to the, the full document, but I think that would be helpful.
Well, did you want to have a short presentation to council to explain that memo, or? No? Okay, all right.
I'm, I'm not asking for that, I'm just, somebody else can. But the, so are we okay with that?
Of course, if no is down here, so.
All right, did we get three? Okay. And then-
Just so I understand, so this is a memo memorandum prepared describing the affordable housing obligations for the downtown site and the history of that, just a memo to council with the links to the backup, background documents.
Right, and I think that one thing that you referenced, the person speaking earlier, and talking about how wonderful it was that we've done the nice solutions with the private developers on the property, but realize that the results of all of that was putting that, aside from the Stockman's deal, which actually found land that was otherwise not available for housing, that all of the others ended up putting housing on the place, and so what we're really talking about is putting housing downtown on the land that we own. So, now the, then the last, and what I'm asking for in this memo is the reason why that makes sense, basically, given the history of the thing.
And my apologies for interrupting your matters initiated, but I just want to make sure that we have the background documentation, because I think that's what really people need to see, those that are willing to dive into the details more powerfully.
So, I said, properly footnoted with links to the full documents. So, then the, the last thing that I wanted to mention is I was concerned by the, what we have is basically some establishments in the city that might be turning into a real nuisance, and my question to the city attorney and the police chief, basically, is, I'd like, do you need legislative help to make sure that we can effectively deal with these nuisance situations?
It's a very timely question. My office has been sitting down reviewing and analyzing our existing public nuisance ordinance that we have. Our review has indicated it does need some revisions to make it more effective. We are also getting together, when I say we, it's the city attorney's office, neighborhood preservation and community development, and the building division, as well as the police department, to explore other tools that may be available to help address public nuisances throughout the community, and so that meeting will be occurring this Friday. So, with regard to the amendments to the existing code, we were anticipating returning to you sometime later this summer with proposed revisions to our existing ordinance.
Thank you, because I was thinking, we, you know, a few years ago had to deal with some legislative help for dealing with the residences that were a nuisance, and it strikes me is that we, now we're having a situation where we're more, and we need to more effectively deal with it and give you the ability. So, you'll, you'll be coming back in the summer with some thoughts?
Correct. We'll be returning with amendments and revisions to your existing ordinance, and at that time, if we have identified additional tools that would be helpful, we'll bring those to your attention at that time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. April eleventh, I attended the Tri Valley San Joaquin Regional Rail meeting. This is the AB seven fifty-eight group, which is working on making a rail connection between BART and ACE in the Tri Valley. There was a discussion there about a discussion that had occurred on another commission that I'm on, which is the San Joaquin Regional Rail Commission, which is the agency that operates the Altamont commuter express, and there was a discussion about seeking private funding for transit connections, because, as I had pointed out, there are companies over in Silicon Valley making hundreds of billions of dollars collectively that are having a difficult time getting their workers to their job sites, and this was something that we talked about, that we had asked the executive director of the San Joaquin Regional Rail if there had been any interest, and she said that, in fact, there were companies out there that had offered initial estimates of a half a billion dollars, that's five hundred million dollars, to make rail connections, and the regional rail commission had asked them to pursue that, if they're, to find more information about companies that would be willing to, to, to fund private, private funding for, for rail systems. Somehow, there was a comment that the agency took action, which the agency took no action. They had merely asked that information be provided, and somebody came up with an idea that even though there was no alignment suggested in the discussion, that somebody had suggested that they were going to be running trains through the vineyards, and that was absolutely untrue. I have no idea where they came up with that idea, but there was no action taken, it was merely to seek information about finding private funding, and there are companies out there that are interested in doing it. So, that was the eleventh. On the twelfth, we welcomed a new multinational technology company called Kinetics. They've moved here to Livermore. They had a very cool virtual reality setup where you put on the virtual reality goggles, and you literally walked three D around a piping manifold, which had been constructed in the middle of the room that wasn't there, so really, really interesting stuff. Friday, the thirteenth, the TB thirty board meeting, we went over the operations and capital budget, including the capital items for the, the new council chambers and emergency operations center. The seventeenth, we had the IGATE Board of Directors meeting, where also we went over budget, future expansion and operations plans. That afternoon was the Dublin San Rowan Services District sixty-fifth anniversary celebration, and as mentioned before, we had the Chestnut Square Affordable Senior and Family Development, we had the groundbreaking for that, and in the middle of it is Pedrosi Common, recognizing Mario Pedrosi, who set up the foundation and scholarship program that bears his name. The nineteenth, as Councilmember Carling pointed out, was the Chairs Lunch for LV PAC. Saturday, the twenty-first, the Best of the Best at the Los Pecitas College was another great event. This morning, I participated in a national webinar on homelessness with Orlando Mayor Buddy Dyer, who has really been leading the charge on collaborative efforts to leverage resources to combat homelessness. I would like to point out that BART will be considering conventional BART to Livermore at their meeting on Thursday, April twenty-sixth, so if you're interested in bringing full BART to Livermore, this is a very important meeting, so you can go online, express your comments, go to the meeting, nine o'clock, at the BART Board Meeting in, in Oakland. Saturday was also the Livermore Community Service Day, a remarkable day, and it was also somewhat, somewhat fitting that that was the celebration of life for our first city historian. Councilmember Carling was there also. We spoke of Gary Drummond and his decades of contributions to this community and to the nation, but that same day, there were over a thousand people that had stepped up to serve this community. They were painting at Hagaman Farm, they were planting, they were weeding, they were working out at the parks, at the schools. It was an amazing day of people giving the most valuable thing that they had, their time, to keep Livermore a great community. So, as we close this meeting, I would like to recognize the efforts of one particular Livermore volunteer, and that was Suzanne Leong, and some of you may have seen her working quietly in City Hall. She freely gave of her time working on projects in the city manager's office, doing a variety of tasks that supported city staff, and I'm sorry to say that Suzanne Leong suddenly passed away earlier this month, and so in that, I would like to, in her honor and memory, adjourn tonight's meeting, so thank you.